This conference will now be recorded.
All right. Good evening. I would like to call to order this, the regular town council meeting for Tuesday, February ninth, two thousand and twenty one. I'm going to start with an introduction. I see mostly familiar. People logged in, but just in case. Members of the public, keep, please keep your microphones muted during the meeting unless you are the person asking a question. Also kindly keep your camera inactive unless you are speaking. This system does not deal well with multiple simultaneous speakers. The audio from only one person will come through at a time. Therefore, please only speak if you have been recognized. I don't have a traditional wooden gavel. I don't need one because I have a mute all button. If people aren't participating respectfully, I'll be forced to mute all so the person who has the floor can be heard. We'll now proceed to go through the agenda. If you wish to question or comment regarding a particular item, please type into the chat bar that you do. If you look to the, one of the top corners of your screen, you'll see a little cartoon text bubble. When you click on that icon, you will see a strip appear on the side of your screen. Please type into that strip your request to speak. I will first look for questions from those who are using a computer or a smartphone app to participate. Once I have heard from all who are logged in digitally, I'll see comments from those who have dialed in. If you do comment, if I do recognize you, please introduce yourself by saying your name and address. With that, please rise for a moment of silence. We'll have the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam clerk, would you please call the roll?
Fishbein. Lefin.
Here.
Maron.
Here.
Morganstein.
Here.
Chortel.
Here.
Tada.
Here.
Teta.
Here.
Zandry.
Here.
Chairman Stravoni.
Here.
Can we have a motion on the consent agenda, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move. We approve consent agenda items A through O.
Second. Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, the consent agenda passes. I do see Roz Gallagher on the call. Your entire commission, the Public Celebrations Commission was reappointed during the consent agenda, and you have two new appointees. Patricia Coppola and Stacy Crowell. So congratulations.
Thank you, Vinnie, and thank you, everyone on the council.
And we're not going to swear you in on screen, so please arrange with the clerk to go take your oath.
Will do. Thank you again, and thank you for your support all through the year.
It's our pleasure. Thank you. Onto item four. There are no items removed from the consent agenda. Onto item five, the public question and answer period. I see a request from Bob.
Good afternoon, Bob Gross, Long Hill Road. I had a couple of questions, but you know, I was, I'm on here and I'm seeing government media on here. And I was just wondering if this to the mayor or to the county, I guess it's the mayor. I remember seeing that Scott Hanley is going to be retiring or he could be retired for all I know now. Are you replacing him or what's going on with government media?
We're reviewing what the office is doing and will be making decisions as time goes on.
Is, is he still, I mean, it's a, to me, it's a very, well, to many people in community, what he does is behind the scenes, but he does so much for the town, public information, not just these meetings, but the United Way, the Youth and Social Services, all the things that are going on in town, puts them on screen, but also lets people know what's going on. I mean, I understand this has been a different type of year, so I would hope that you would plan on replacing them with a, I mean, you're, so you're thinking of not replacing them? Is that the issue?
I believe I said that it's all under review, current COVID conditions. What we've been able to achieve, not achieve in the past months approaching a year at this point. It's under review and we'll be making a decision in the future.
And do you have any idea what the timeline would be then? Because future is open ended.
Yeah, it's open ended.
That's, that's unfortunate. I hope that this doesn't go by the wayside. It's in a, I would think it's a vital part of the community. He's done a fantastic job over all these years, as everybody knows. And I, and again, I don't, I don't even know if he's still there, but but it's, it would be a shame to lose that position. I mean, it's a shame losing Scott, but it'd be a shame not to fill his shoes with somebody to do everything that's done for the town over all these years. Thank you.
Thank you. I see nothing else in the chat bar and
But I have, I have another question then.
Okay.
Okay, I, I backed out because in case there was somebody else who wanted, you know, I, I was giving up my turn sort of. So to the parking lot on Simpson Court, the, to the mayor, I would assume, or to the counselors. Is the lease, there's a lease in effect now. Is it the same lease from nineteen sixty one?
Depending on the property, it is basically the same lease. The one that is not in covered would be the our property, TD Bank is located on.
Right, so he has no lease then, because he backed out of it a few years ago. So that original lease, if I remember correctly, was a right of way of approximately forty feet east to west. And then
I believe it was sixty, I believe it was sixty feet.
Okay, and, and it was just, it was used, it was a right of way and parking within that right of way.
That's correct. The right of way with parking on either side, I believe.
And then, so it's not the whole lot or anything of that nature, and the maintenance was for, so the right, so the maintenance that the town would need to do was just on that right of way.
That's correct.
And now we're going to go in a much larger scale.
That's correct. In order to allow for a turnaround, so vehicles can go in and come out.
You mean, you mean through, you mean the north to south? Is that what you meant?
Yeah, either, either north to south or south to north, allow for vehicles to move more freely, find parking spaces and exit in the direction they want to exit.
I have a follow up then. And since the first referendum, which was approximately ten years ago on this, the, I remember before that, that there was a grand plan that this was going to be the first of many parking lots that was going to be done in the center of town because they were all important to the merchants, into the vitality of the town. Were any lots done since the ten years that this referendum failed on the first time?
Improvements have been made to a variety of lots. Green striping is an example. There have been improvements made to some lots that also are under lease. The lot between Whittlesey and Orchard. So there have been improvements made over those years.
You're talking a lot between Southwood, North Whittlesey and North Orchard? The one that I'm just going to, behind monitor controls and Wallingford Flower, that lot?
That's correct. We had to repair some drainage, not drainage, but the lack of drainage created a deteriorating pothole there. So there have been improvements and then I believe it was draped with green.
Well, if, if that lot's been improved, it's a mess. I don't know when you were last in it. I mean, there are green lines there now. I will, there are many green lines on many parking lots. But the maintenance on that, I don't know. I mean, there, there isn't much, and even in the own town lots, I know there's one on North Orchard Street, a town owned lot, and there hasn't been any maintenance done on that lot or cleanup. So I mean, it's, there has, there was a sign put up though. There was a sign, I will grant you that. There was a sign telling people there is a public lot on North Orchard Street. So I'm just surprised in these economic times that the that justify spending the money to pave and lease a private lot when I'm not involved in or anything like that, but I saw that there's talk of potentially charging the Y and the Yulbrick Boys and Girls Club because Park and Rec Department, you know, their budget is tight. These are things that for the town citizens to have kids, programs for kids that potentially could be charged more, and some might not be able to make it or not have the programs is just a shame. And then during this pandemic, the lack of technology in town hall put everybody at risk, especially in the beginning. Many town halls are closed or have are able to do things remotely. I don't know what, and I'm not, I know you can't answer these questions, but it's just a shame if somebody got sick because they had to be there when they didn't need to be there. Especially because technology today, just look at this meeting, a couple of years ago, this would never have happened to town. Even if we had the technology to do it, it would never have happened, but now it does.
Thank you for the compliment, Mr. Gross. Can you wind up, please?
Well, I was just hoping that, you know, I would hate to see programs cut from particular commune or particular things because you're spending the money do things, you know, let's fill in those potholes and, and the drainage, let's, you know, and then get away, get away from this lot, you know? I can't imagine that's what you consider to be improvements, but I'm pretty much all set. And I think somebody else has got a question for you.
Hi, Debbie Gross, obviously Long Hill Road. I guess I have a question for each one of the counselors who voted for improving a private parking lot for
You're not going to pull the council. You're not going to pull the council. This item's not on the agenda. You're not going to pull the council.
Well, I guess I would like to know the rationale and how you justify spending that amount of money on a private parking lot when there are so many things in the town of Wallingford that need attention. As Bob mentioned, the technology in town, the many other lots and roads that are in so much disrepair. The YMCA and other civic programs that help out the kids in these towns, in this town. There are so, so many things that, and you're asking, and these economic times especially, you're asking the departments to cut back, to hold their budget lines. And I guess in all good consciousness, I don't understand how you could in all good conscience do that. It just doesn't seem responsible and economical. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mayor.
I just, you know, we constantly hear about it being a public parking lot. That has been a public parking area since nineteen sixty one. Lease gives the right to the public to park on that lot. And it's not a good place to park. It needs improvement. It's, it's time that be improved. It's not a private area. It is a public area.
It is not. It is private parking lot, in my opinion, for the businesses, the business establishments. The people who park in that parking lot, like any other business, provide parking to their patrons. TD Bank is a bank and they have many patrons and people park there. And just like all the restaurants and look, and the Archie Moores and everybody else on Center Street, on North Main, and throughout the town of Wallingford all have their own parking lot, which they all maintain. And some of the parking lots on, in Simpson Court have already been paved. And the right of way up to, from their parking lot up to Simpson Court also have been paved at the owner's expenses. They were doing the responsible thing as a business owner to take care of their property. There are some people that did not take care of their property. And it seems like, and I know it's been said before, that you're picking winners and losers. There is the Wooding Kaplan lot, which you did not give enough attention to. And why not spend the money on that lot, which the town owns? And like I said, the part that was leased was a right of way between Center and Church Street. And the public could have been TD Bank owner, Mr. McGuire, decided to put the New Jersey barriers up. And frankly, it didn't affect anything. So I guess I'm still trying to figure out how the council could spend money in these economic times on a parking lot. Thank you.
All right. With that, I will close the public question and answer period and move on. We have an add on post agenda. So Mr. Vice Chairman, can we have a motion to waive rule five?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move we waive rule five for the purposes of discussing a transfer for Public Works Department overtime.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Any discussion on the motion to waive rule five, to be clear? All right, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, the agenda is amended. Mr. Vice Chairman, can we have that motion, please?
Yes, I move we approve a transfer in the amount of twenty thousand dollars from the senior center light upgrade account and twenty seven thousand dollars from the senior center painting account to the overtime account for Public Works for a total of forty seven thousand dollars.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Mr. Baltramidis, can you please enlighten us?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, counselors. You know, thank you for seeing me on short notice. So I won't take long. I won't beat the, the dead horse. We went, we talked about this in quite some detail just a couple of weeks ago at your meeting with the first request to transfer into overtime. You know, obviously we're dealing with winter weather. I think what's going to happen for the remainder of this year is you're going to see me many, many times because I'm going to look to make transfers into the count to keep it funded, but also keep us with the ability to maintain the roadways, to, you know, plow snow, treat ice and, and do it and, you know, keep the road safe for the town of Wallingford. You know, the accounts that I'm proposing transfer from this evening, they were planned to be capital accounts that would have made some improvements to the senior center. One would be an LED lighting upgrade. The other is, you know, painting of the interior, which is, which is getting aged. You know, I think we just have to, or I have to, I have to pick and choose which of my accounts and budgets this year are, are projects are not going to happen so that again, you know, we can maintain safety for the public. And tonight is, well, you see what the example is. A couple of weeks ago, it was, it was a ninety thousand dollar truck that we desperately needed, but we're not going to get this year. So like I said, I'm, I'm not going to beat it to death. That's what the request is this evening. But you will see me back here again.
Thank you. So we'll be within twenty one thousand dollars of what you had requested initially last year. Is that correct?
Yeah, that, that is correct. So what I had requested last year is obviously based on a, an average. It's a five year average, and I could tell you right now where we stand, we're going to be above average. And that's why even with this request to be within twenty thousand dollars or so of a five year average, it may not be good enough this year. I think we're going to be on the upper side of those averages. Just this week alone, after this evening, you know, we're looking at forecasts that talk about three potential storms over the next seven days.
Yeah. So even if the council had given you what you had requested, you'd probably be in front of us in the next several months anyway.
Or, or only weeks, correct, correct, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
And to give you an example, so this, this request is for forty seven thousand dollars total. Sunday alone, I just, you know, just so you guys can come away with an understanding. So, you know, by, by union contract, you know, outside of the normal working hours of Monday through Friday, seven to three thirty PM. You know, obviously our, our employees are entitled to overtime, which is time and a half, but that becomes double time on Sundays and on holidays. So this last Sunday was a double time event. It started for us at seven AM and went through midnight that night. We actually did not get out until Monday, three thirty the next day. It was a long event. It was an expensive one. Overtime alone from Sunday storm cost this town about thirty five thousand dollars.
Thank you. First up from the council, Councilor Chortel.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Can I share my screen? Can you? Please. Thank you.
All right.
Awesome. I think I see it. Okay, let me know when you can see my
screen.
All right, Rob, welcome back. So
Thank you.
And I'm sorry you're here. I, I'm sticking with the movie theme. This one's a deep cut. I think only a few people, I know a few people will get this, but Kobayashi is a no win situation. And I, you're definitely a no win situation here. So I just want to start off by acknowledging that and thanking you and thanking your department, everyone out there on the, on the snowplows and the Sanders and everyone out there at all hours. You know, we can't thank you. And I'm not going to beat a dead horse either in terms of how we got here. Just to recap, in one sentence, we were just trying to make some overall reductions. And we felt like we had to pick line items at the last minute. That's why we hit overtime. It was not a reflection on your estimate. What I want to focus on quickly though, and you said this just now, and I, I, that's glad you said what you said. Because I feel like these projects that you're cutting, I feel like there are other ways to fund them. And I guess I just want to talk about that very quickly. With the senior center stuff, the pile truck last time, so I guess you know, one option is, you know, by the end of the year, if you have extra money, I'm assuming you will fund some of these items if you did have extra money in your budget.
So obviously I would like to, I mean, come the end of the year, we start to get into, you know, month ten or eleven out of the fiscal year, we would certainly look to see if we have some, you know, unexpendable balances that could be, you know, used or transferred to allow projects to happen or to make purchases happen. I can tell you it is very difficult to make a purchase of something like a vehicle. That has to be, you know, a specification developed, bid out and, you know, awarded and then received. Believe it or not, a simple pickup truck, a thirty thousand dollar half ton pickup truck. We put bids out right at the beginning of the fiscal year in July, awarded them. We're just about to take delivery almost six months later or six months more, like it's, it's a lot. So even if we have money come May and June and it looks good, there's some things you just cannot happen in that short timeframe. Now maybe a painting project could, because you know, we, we have an on-call vendor. We could put a contract together with them and let that happen, but it, I don't think we can accomplish everything at the end of the fiscal year.
Okay, now that I, that makes, I get that. You know, and this is, this, this, well before your time there, this, there is a history of extra funds. We just got the CAFR. So I updated this slide from last time. I'm not going to harp on it, but there is a history of, of funds that are unspent, budget variances. One thing I did want to, you know, Counselor Tata had asked this question about Sal, I think she asked this last time you're here, if you could draw money from regular wages. And you are running a little under there. It's not a lot, so maybe it's not enough. But I only bring this up because it appears the police do this a lot. I was going through other budget transfers. In fact, we just approved the transfer for fifteen thousand that the police put on the agenda, the consent agenda, from regular wages to something else. And we, that's the second such transfer we've done this year, this calendar year. If you go back before that, there, it feels like every few weeks, every few meetings, they have some kind of transfer. So I just didn't know if I'm going to kind of re-ask Counselor Tata's question from two weeks ago. Just because when she asked the question, I, I never thought about that. And when I looked at some of the past agendas, I'm like, wow, the police do this all the time. I just, if you had any thoughts on that?
Yeah, so and, and I think it's about time to do that. So as I'm understanding your question, so I might rephrase it as, as I'm answering, you just, you know, confirm for me that I, that I'm understanding what you're asking. So, you know, for a regular straight time, based on what we are anticipated to be staffed with, the number of maintainer ones, maintainer twos, streets fours, mechanics, crew leaders, et cetera. You know, obviously we develop a regular salary budget for that. Now, there's always times where a position is vacant due to retirement and you ever replace it, it takes time. So as that builds up, let's say for the first six months of this fiscal year, if a position has been vacant, that money that was allocated for that irregular salary is now available. And I'm certainly going to look at that for, you know, perhaps the next request. And it's inevitable that I come back to you to transfer some monies into overtime. And I will, I will look to do that with the salaries that were unexpended, but anticipated for the time that has lapsed. As I explained, I don't know that, you, you take that one Sunday alone, that was thirty five thousand dollars. I don't know that what is unexpended, a regular salary is actually going to make a big dent in that, but I think it's a wise place to, to look at.
Okay, yeah, that's good to hear. And I, and again, I know it's a moving target and you'd rather do it later in the year than now. I get that. It was just something I noticed from the last meeting. That's why, yeah. This question may not be, I don't know if it's more for you or for Mr. Bose or for the mayor. I mean, for these, you know, for these senior center projects, or for the snowplow, could we use CRA funds to, to purchase those?
You're talking about the senior center?
You, yeah, I mean, I know like the painting, I don't know if the painting project is a capital project or the LED. I don't know what the criteria, if
Yeah, that, that really wouldn't be a capital project from my standpoint, but I believe that one, one or more of those have been accomplished by the senior center through other means. Given that they, the center has not been used to the degree that you'd normally find it used. I think they found the opportunity to be able to make some of those improvements.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah, Counselor Chertel, if I can jump in on that, you know, so at the start of this budget year, you know, I, I knew right away, we had to start looking for ways, we're going to try to start to fund the overtime. So I talked to Mr. Viola at the senior center and I said, look, you know, these are projects that we planned, you know, it's a town building. We plan to do these, but given what I'm up against, they're unlikely to happen. I think when it came to the painting, Mr. Viola was able to accommodate some or all of that with, with their own funding, which, which is great, you know? So I was, like I said, I was, I was able to let him know early on and I think they dealt with that.
That's great. What about the snowplow from last meeting?
Yeah, so, so at, at this point, I don't have fun. It's a ninety thousand dollar truck. And again, without rehashing at all, I explained, you know, how many trucks we have, trucks like that we have on the road. Um and and again, without rehashing at all, I explained, you know, how many trucks we have, trucks like that we have on the road at, you know, any time during the storm. It's it's upwards of twenty-three trucks. There are twenty-one runs with two floaters ideally for fully staffed. So um you know, we do try to do one a year just to maintain a working average of of a truck being twelve years old. Which for, you know, a truck that works hard and is in those environments, that's um, you know, that's not a new shiny fleet. You know, that's just um keeping up with what we need to. So no, I I do not have funding for that truck at this point.
Well, I guess that's what I'm saying is we if if that truck, you could get funding right now from the C R R A fund for that truck, I think. So I guess that's what I'm pointing. I I that's all I'm pointing out is is that that I believe there's that, there's ninety thousand dollars in that fund.
So yeah, I think it um, you know, I certainly, I don't want to speak for the.
Decision and I mean.
Funds, um you know, I I think there there's there's limited funds in there and when they're gone, they're gone. So I just think as a town, we have to be very careful as to, you know, what purchases we make out of that.
Understood, and that's understood. I I would just, you know, I.
If I could refocus us, Councilor Chertel, you know, the the truck and and the lights, I mean, the lights are technically on the agenda, but the truck is not. This is really about the overtime transfer.
It's a but it's the conceptual, Vinny, it's the same thing. It's 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 the overtime. It's the need to replenish, to cut. Their expenditures are being cut. Projects are being cut to fund the overtime. And so I'm just explaining to the public and to everyone that there are other ways to pay for these projects. The decision to cut them is a choice. So if you look at, I just mentioned C R R A funds um for the senior center projects. If if that was in fact needed or for the plow last time, we do have three examples in the last couple of years where there were things that came up in the budget uh that were not in the budget. So in in January twenty-third, twenty eighteen, uh there was a need to replace the scale at the dump. And it was almost sixty thousand dollars. And so we used C R R A funding to pay to pay for that. That was not in the budget. And we didn't even talk about it. It was on consent. So um we also had two other occasions later that year where we needed additional, the one the truck there was in the C R R A budget, but the bid came about thousand dollars higher. That money was, that additional nine hundred dollars was taken out of the C R A and then and we bought the Brothers property. We had to put a deposit down. So I'm just pointing out examples to try to help Rob because I feel bad that we can't, you know, like the the plow or do these other projects. And and as we keep coming back to these things, projects are being cut, I'm just pointing out that I think there is there are other ways to fund these projects. And I think it's important. So. Uh that's, you know, the the end here, along the same lines, I also have, you know, we have ton-wide paving money. Um five years ago, so it's well before your time, Rob. You you weren't. Mission, but I mean, this is a half a million dollars that's sitting there. So I so again, um can we not access some of this money? I don't, I think there's to pay for some of these other projects.
Yeah, I mean, I I I'll just throw this out there. I mean, I I like the way you're thinking. I because the the way you're thinking, Councilor Chertel, is um, you know, Rob is telling us we need that truck and and we do. And you're you're like, maybe there's ways to to purchase it. Well, I I've had to go into this budget year saying, I need to make this whole year work with what I have. And and as you know, um you know, it was a, you know, when the when the council was talking about each department, you know, giving back one percent and how could you do that? Um you know, I I I think I took about a three percent hit. And I understand it just it all came out of the overtime line. It's my job to try to replenish that overtime and a three percent department loss out of all these accounts. And that's what I'm trying to do. I don't look at the C R R A as just a public works account. Um I don't know that cap and non is, although it's capital, it's more of infrastructure capital, buildings, roads, facilities. Um I don't know, uh and it would be a question for Jim Bose or the lot apartment. I don't know, even though we call vehicles a capital purchase, I don't know if that's what it's intended for. So, you know, again, I I'm just trying to fund these things out of what I what I have this year.
Yep, understood. I I totally get that. And I just, you know, I just, um and I think your hands are tied, kind of just what you described. So I just want to, you know, emphasize that there is other funding available. I think it could be used. Um and again, I'm not going to go line by line. This is some other options. Uh there's even this this, I only, this is an interesting one, this ton-wide drainage. Um twenty eighteen, we already pulled thirty thousand from it for the police three years ago. Um so, you know, there's there are, there are lots of options out there. And um bottom line, you know, we support you. I support you.
I appreciate it. I I know that.
You know, it's just, um and I and I think some of these decisions are administrative and 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 they're but, you know, they're, like you said, it's not, I get that. C R A funds not your fund. It's for the whole town. But but I get to sit up as a counselor and say, Rob, come on, come on, Mayor, come on, Jim Bose, there's other money here. Uh don't tell us we can't buy the snowplow. If we really wanted to, we could buy the snowplow. We could paint the senior center, do these other things. So anyway, um thank you very much, Rob, and I will uh stop sharing my screen. I figure out how to do it. Do I? I don't know, Vinny, is that, am I, do I stop sharing?
The only way I could stop you, there you go. Um, Councilor Chertel, can you please send that to the town clerk to be added to the record?
Yes, thank you. I will. I will do that.
Thank you. Next up, Councilor Morganstein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, I have um great appreciation for Chris Chertel having given us those numbers because I was going to, without the specific numbers, make the exact um argument. Um certainly, we're going to give Rob the money. Winter storms are not going to be getting smaller in upcoming years. And um we can't take the route that we take, which is, let's let his fleet get older and then take the chance that there's a vehicle that is not serviceable and suddenly you can't plow in a storm. So as we get into our new budget season, we need to, for the length of time we still have Chris with us, um take these kind of ideas and put them into our budget thinking as opposed to where can we cut money? Where can we sensibly put money so that we're not picking and pulling out things that in the long run leave us not maintaining things properly and not replacing things at an age where they need to be? That is all I had to say. And of course, we're going to give you the money, Rob.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Tata, next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh and thank you to uh Councilor Chertel for the numbers. Um. The last time this came up for the plow truck, um I had a similar feeling and now it's coming up again. And it seems to me there's a little bit of a double standard with this department having to ask us for these things when other departments ask for things and they're given very easily out of contingency or transferred from other accounts um on consent agenda. Uh for example, when the fire department came before us for, I believe it was hundreds of thousands of dollars for replacement pay, I believe that was taken from contingency with no problem. Um and I just started thinking, why aren't we doing this with public works for far less money? Um in this case, forty-seven thousand. And I think. I I don't want to make assumptions, but I think there were, I think it's a bit of a, maybe a slap on the wrist to those of us who thought that we could read this line. Um and now we have to live with the consequences of that. And I, as Councilor Chertel said, I don't think these have to be the consequences. I think that there is money for these items and I think we could have funded the plow truck and I think we still can. Um and and these two senior center items should be happening and they can't happen. We have the money for it. Um it's just a matter of what we're going to use to get them. And obviously, um you know, Mr. Beltrami is needing to pay overtime for for storms is is certainly a priority. And well, I don't think any of us would ever let that not happen. Um so I appreciate what you're doing, but I just wanted to clarify. The senior center painting, it seemed like from what the mayor said and Mr. Beltrami, I I think you you uh agreed with it. The senior center painting is, that was completed by the senior center?
Uh that's my understanding. Like I said, um I talked to Mr. Viola very early in in the budget year and let him know that this was likely to happen, that these projects may not go forward. Um and and I I believe he was able to accomplish that, you know, with his own funding.
Okay, perfect. So so the twenty-seven thousand dollars then for the painting is not is not an issue because that happens on their end. So that's good. So we don't need to worry about um, so that's almost extra money that you had. Um the lightning upgrade, that would be something you would need to do, though, correct? The public works would need to do?
Yeah, it would be a a project we would look to do in the future. I mean, this would be a a project that would upgrade to L E Ds that would, you know, put the facility in a position going forward to um have energy savings.
Okay.
Yeah.
Go ahead, sorry.
No, I apologize, um Councilor Tata. Um you know, one of the things I wanted to say is, when when um and I I don't look at it like, oh, the 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 council, you know, cut us and um, well, I mean, I was I was cut. Let me rephrase that. I was, I was caught. It all went into this one light item. And, you know, again, it was attended to the department-wide, you know, across all the accounts. And, you know, the council did this, and I understand, you know, um, you know, before I got there and maybe even last year while I was there, there have been surpluses at the end of D P W budget everywhere. And I think that's why the council looked at D P W and said, this is a department that can make cuts beyond the one percent. Um what I am trying to do and the reason I'm making these requests right now to fund overtime, I'm at least trying to get it to my five-year average with my other accounts. Because I think that's exactly what you guys intended. Beyond that, make no mistake, I will be looking for other sources of money. Because I think it's proper planning on my part to come in and say, here's a five-year average, here's the budget I need. Okay, you know what? I got cut. I will fund that up to that five-year average beyond that because it's a bad winter. I'm coming back to you guys and we'll come back to the mayor and I'm saying, I need contingency. I need other funding sources. So but I think we're almost at that point to uh the chairman's point this evening. I'm now within twenty thousand dollars of my original ask. So I don't know if that helps put things in perspective.
Sure, yeah, no, I appreciate that. And I and I know you're you're doing everything you can. Um I think I think what what we're, at least those of us who have spoken so far, I think what we're saying is, we can fund these things. It may not be from a different line item of yours, but there's areas.
Correct, yeah.
So but yeah, I I know, I I totally understand what you're saying. I appreciate that. The um back to the senior center lighting, is that something that the senior center can pay for um out of their budget? Because they've they've been closed. I'm assuming they um, this might be a good time for them to be able to do that. Is that something they can pay for?
You know what? And and I'm not privy to um, you know, all of their finances. But because they've been closed, they may be short on program money if that's one of their revenue generating sources that that would have would have helped their coffers. So, you know, while it may be a good time to do it because the the building is is not occupied as much. It may be bad because they're not taking the money in. I don't know.
Yeah, and we and, you know, we can look at that with um and see where where they are financially. I didn't look at that one, that one line today because I got this kind of late. But um I'm just wondering if that's possible for them. I mean, public works doesn't necessarily need to be involved in that, correct? If they were to do.
It it is our building, you know, it is a town of long for building. So, you know, we we have an interest in 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 improving the the lighting there. Um you know, but just like the painting, I think if they had the ability, they they would take the project on.
Okay, all right. Well, that's good to know. So at least there's there's a few options there. Um I thought that the painting is done, so that, you know, we don't really need to worry about that at this point. Uh those. Oh, one one further question. I know when um, I think this might play into your budget a little bit and just helping me understand where you fall um with overtime and with your regular salaries. When we had talked about the Brothers Lot, I had asked if public works does a project like that. So it's something you don't, you know, I'm sure projects like this come up and you don't budget for them because you don't know if they're happening. But then public works is asked to do the projects. And I said, do you get paid as a an outside contractor would get paid? And I believe you said you don't. Do you know how, is there any way to know how much you spend on projects like that throughout the year? Um or or even, you know, in this year, like things that come up that you haven't budgeted for, but that the town asks you to do. And obviously, we want public works to do it because you do a good job and it's cheaper. Is there a way to to track those or to see how much that is? So maybe, you know, there's more of a cushion if if big things like that come up for you?
Um really good question. I mean, there's really not a mechanism in place that would, you know, track labor by assignment, you know, where they are each day. I mean, um when when guys go out in the morning, you know, there is a um, there's a meeting every morning. Guys come in, punch in, they're giving their side their assignments and and people are off on their way. Um I I think what we would have to do is say, okay, if let's just say, right now, we're um doing some remodel over behind Skow for the STEM Academy. Um if we wanted to know what our actual costs over there, we would have the consciousness to say, okay, let's start tracking everybody's time who's going over on that assignment and and doing that on a daily basis. I think would be kind of laborious to track, but we could do it if we know we wanted to track something.
Okay, yeah, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't want you to have to go through all that. Um but I just, I'm just wondering, you know, if if there was any specific project that really, you know, makes you go over. But it sounds like every year you kind of have that baked in sort of, you kind of expect these types of projects.
Uh well, e- exactly. I I I think we look at what we have going on. Um let me, I'll give you an example. So we know the roads we're going to pave this spring um in the ones that will potentially be on the fall paving, you know, that'll be on the cap non list for you guys to consider, um you know, for the next budget year. So let's just take the ones this spring. If it's a good winter, we're out there prepping those roads, um replacing the catch basin tops, repairing any drainage that needs to be done and getting them ready to be paved. We start having weather um like we're having now. Now we're not prepping those roads. That means we're not going to be available um for a project like a Brothers or something. So it it it's a moving target. It depends how we're progressing with our other stuff, whether we have time to take on one of these special projects or not.
Okay, great. Thank you. Uh those are, those are all of my my questions. And again, thank you um with the recent storms. They've been doing a really good job on the road, so thanks for that.
Thank you. I I I think all the workers have been doing a fantastic job. Thank you.
They have, and the roads have been really, really good. So thank you.
Councilor Marone. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Um so this is going to take me a little bit to get there. So we get the email today that says uh that we have to wait for five to talk about this uh this budget issue that we're going to be short in the overtime account, which we all kind of knew we were going to be short in the overtime account because you had told us at the last meeting um that that we were in sort of a predicament, right? And we know, as we've talked about already, this this really isn't about our changes to the budget, really, we're about overtime or about your department specifically, but about probing areas to find out where it is that um uh, you know, if you end up with a half a million dollars every year, that money has to come from somewhere. Something had to be budgeted in those accounts, right? So something either didn't get done or didn't get paid for by by our choice. Either we ran out of time or we just didn't see the value in the project. So then we take away the plow truck and the plow truck is something that I, you know, obviously see the need in, right? Because, you know, you have to keep the roads plowed. I mean, it's public safety and I think you guys do a great job with that. Then we go to the the lighting in the senior center, which kind of seems like the low-hanging fruit in terms of things to get rid of if you need to save money. So then, I guess my question is, how was it that we elected to not, to keep the lights in and the painting in first and remove the plow truck first and then take the lights out second?
Um you're asking me, what was the particular order?
I, you know, that's not really a fair question. Let me, let me back. I guess I guess my question is, so when I was on the board of it, we used to have a list of projects that they wanted to get done. That probably numbered in, say, fifty, right? And so by by order of magnitude, they would kind of decide what they think was the most important projects. I presume you have a list like that in public works, correct?
Of course.
Okay, so maybe at budget time, it would be helpful if if you could let the council in on some of those ideas. So we have an idea of, you know, what projects could be funded other ways or if we need to make cuts, where it could come from, just just sort of an an idea. I didn't mean to ask you what, how you pick which projects stay and which ones go. But, you know, presumably in your budget, there's going to be projects that aren't going to get done. We know we have a lot of road paving that doesn't get done because we run out of time and we run out of manpower as you would just identify and so forth. So I guess my concern is not necessarily that we're spending the money on the overtime because we have to, right? Uh it it's more of the 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 sort of sense of urgency with which we then present this today. And this isn't really an issue with you or a question for you as much. And this isn't really an issue with you or a question for you as much as.
Go ahead. I, I'm sorry. I don't mean to interrupt. It, it was my urgency. I, I'm the one who went to the mayor's office today and said, I am essentially out of money. This last Sunday just took a huge, huge task. Um, we've got guys out, we got storms coming this weekend. So I am the one who brought this urgency.
Okay. That's fair enough. And you know, in the, your predecessor, we had, we had many of these meetings, right? And I think that we let a lot of stuff go on consent. I actually, I'm really glad that you're here and we're glad that we're having this discussion because I think, and when we talk about the budget, we spend so little time talking about the actual budget. During budget season, we ask a bunch of questions, then we move on. This gives us the ability to open it up and sort of talk about what are the particulars in your budget? And why are we doing things the way that we're doing them? You know, and then, um, as Counselor Shortell showed us, you know, your department ends up ahead every year, as do most departments. Um, uh, so it's a great way to take sort of a, a, to sort of look at these things in a little bit of more detail. So, so. Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, so I, I think what you're asking, um, and, and it's not to prioritize projects we have, but, but here's, here's the thing. So my, our, our budget, it can be made up of three main things. There's, there's going to be your labor cost, there's going to be our, um, operation or maintenance, and then there's going to be capital projects. At this point, essentially only halfway through the fiscal year, um, operation and maintenance, I'm, I'm afraid to touch those budgets because at this point, I have every confidence that we're going to expand a percent of those budgets. Labor is also essentially a fixed cost, other than if we had one or two positions that weren't vacant. The only thing that you can really go after and say, okay, I, I'm going to take the money to fund the overtime is capital and just not do that project or buy.
No, no, I get that. I get that. And again, with the half, more than half a million dollars left behind in the last fiscal year, we obviously had a lot of projects, a lot of things that we, I mean, some of that salaries, you know, for one reason you can't control. But there was projects that didn't get done. So I, I guess, I think maybe when we go into this budget year, I'd like to have a bigger discussion as far as what can we do to get certainly the old paving projects. I mean, if those reading road, if those roads need to get paved, and that's a problem. If we have road, you know, going back seven years of, of work not being completed. So, uh, I appreciate you being here. I appreciate what your department does. I think that this is a great discussion to sort of get to the bottom of why it is that we end up so far ahead and why we're, you know, we have such a, the list of projects grows, um, you know, and the, and the surpluses grow as well. So thank you very much, Rob. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Marone.
Counselor Zandry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, good evening, Rob. How you doing?
I'm doing well. Good evening. How are you?
Great. But I have a couple of generic questions first and then I kind of, kind of get to this one. So we, we have contingency that's part of the overall budget. Um, and I'm trying to remember and I, I can't. And so I'm going to ask for either Jimbo's help or, or anybody that might remember this. There, there's a date where we can touch contingency. Is that in April? I'm trying to remember the date.
Yeah, I can help here. The charter, Jimbo's controller, uh, the town allow, uh, the charter allows us to transfer uh, from one department to another after April 1. So that's, that's a pretty big date.
All right. And, and April 1. And then we have a contingency.
I'm sorry. And I apologize, Counsel Zandry. Um, Jimbo's, if you can clarify this for me. So I, I thought the question was contingency. So in other words, town or mayoral contingency fund. I think you can do that anytime. However, into departmental transfers can only occur after April 1.
That's correct.
Yeah. Now, that was actually going to be my second question. So we have, and, and this is, and the reason I preface that is that, is to, is to kind of reach into the entire discussion that we've all been kind of having. It deals with the request this evening and, and all of our processes back when we were doing this budget. All of us, all of us counselors are always very particular about the budget. You know, we, we ask a lot of questions. We, we're trying to make it so that we get as close to zero as we possibly can on any increases on the taxpayers, especially recently. Um, we, we know that when the budget is put together, there are contingency accounts that we, we have the, should, should be more specific, a contingency account. That is, I'm going to use the term loaded, but it's not like it's, it's huge, huge account. There's an amount set for it and there's monies put into it on top of all of the other budgets. And then you have the complete entire budget and that's what we basically set our mill rate against and tax people on. So we know there's money there to move around. And we also know that come April 1st, if it really requires it, or we have the ability to do so, we can move money from other departmental budgets into budgets that are overrunning. Because we know that this is not a zero sum game for anybody. Trying to hit, trying to hit zero i- is a, in a moving target year is difficult. And then you take a, take a prior year where we didn't have a lot of storms. We had nuisance storms, but not big hitters. This year we're getting big hitters right now. And even today is, was kind of like a nuisance storm. So we kind of expected this. This is through no fault of anybody, anybody's particular budget. Our, our goal last year was to, to do everything we could to get down to a zero tax increase. And that's what we got. We knew this would happen. So I'm, I'm kind of, uh, what I'm trying to kind of outlay with all of this is, is, is a little bit more to the, everybody else that's watching. And, and to get everybody to understand that while it looks like right now we're moving stuff around and certain projects may not get done, that may or may not be true. A decision may get made later to not do a certain project for some particular reason. But it would be more likely than not a choice rather than completely running out of money because we know that we've got other budgets that are going to end up with surpluses in them. We know we've got the contingency balance that we can utilize. So I, I don't want people to be concerned that we, that we, the council went overboard cutting public works or any other department for that matter. And I want public works to be comfortable to understand, at least from this counselor, that if, if we come back later in the season after the, you know, the weather is clear and we've got roads to do, trucks to purchase and painting to get done, to come back and let us know that you've got time and resources and manpower to still do this work, but your shy budget, let us know because we'll, we'll go looking. This was not a task last year at budget time in, in my estimation. And then we were going to be like, all right, that's done. We don't have any other work to do. This was going to be an ongoing rebalancing act right to June 30th. And, and that's what I knew back then, voting to get it down to zero. So I want departments to understand that we, we know that they're making every effort to stick to their numbers, get the things done and, and, and not micromanage stuff, but to keep an eye on things. And when things go over, things go under, let us know. And then we're going to try and get things done. So basically, all of that is just going to kind of lead to basically a comment back to you, Rob, is really just to say, look, I support this change because we've got, you know, we, we've got to do it regardless because we got to keep the, the safety up there with the plowing and everything else. But I want you to be able to come back to us later and go, look, we won't have time to do the third project. So in, in a way, we had to consume those funds on other things and it kind of works out. But we've still got time for A and B. If we can get the money, let us know and then we'll go looking for it.
No, I, I appreciate that. And Counsel Zandry, I, I know we have the support of the council, the whole council. There is zero doubt in my mind, you know, uh, uh, again, and I, and I said it earlier. I, I just felt it, it was my job. And I understand the reason, again, uh, of why, um, you know, we had about a 3% cut to the overall budget. It's because we showed extra monies for the last, you know, um, teen, um, you know, uh, end, end, end of year closeout. So I'm looking at as, as my job is a way to fund this overtime to get to that average point. Beyond that, I think we're all in this together and, and looking for, you know, monies to fund overtime as goes forward. Cause I, again, I, I feel this winter is going to be exceptional.
Yep. I, so again, I, I appreciate everything the department does. I know that if I've got questions for you guys, you get back to me pretty quickly. And, and I know that when residents follow up with you as well, they may not feel like it's timely, but they, they got to get a little bit of understanding that in the middle of stuff, you're busy. Then afterwards is when you guys do your follow-up. And once in a while, something slips through, you get a reminder call, you guys jump right on it. So I believe.
We try to return all phone calls and as you know, um, our superintendent is 24/7.
Yeah. Great. Thanks a lot. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm all set.
Counselor Laughlin.
Thank you. Yeah. I wasn't going to say anything because I know, um, Rob, you're going to be back and we're going to be having the stay in discussion again for the next couple of meetings probably. Um, but I, I really liked what Jason was having, basically was saying, you know, Jason was just like, look, this, you know, he knew, at least he knew going in that this is the way it was going to play out and we've got to figure it out. Um, so, you know, let's just, let's just keep going forward. Let's fix this as we go. Um, and try not to spend an hour every meeting that you come here talking about. I mean, this should be a quick no brainer. I, the excuse is we just, let's, let's keep moving. That's, that's over, that's done, that's gone. Um, but I am going to take the, the moment to point out that, uh, you know, during the past few budget seasons, you know, it said, look, let's just cut 2% off the top of the number and let the mayor, the department heads and all of them figure it out. This is how it gets figured out. If we don't specify what's going to get cut, then a department head like Rob is going to make these decisions. And then we're going to spend an hour at every meeting being upset about it. Um, so this is the cause, this is the effect of the cause. Um, but anyway, I wanted to thank Jason for his comments and, uh, and see if we can just keep moving. Thanks.
I, I agree. And, um, Counsel Laughlin, I, I think I, we know I will be back. I may be back at your very next meeting. Um, but you know, again, I don't think there'll be the need to, to rehash the reasons we're here. We'll just get right into, um, you know, the, the, the matter at, at hand. Um, you know, but again, you know, I don't feel that I can take money out of our labor, out of our operating maintenance. You know, unfortunately, right now it's, it's capital accounts are going to get hit. And, and maybe at the end, you know, we'll have a, an overage in a, in a, an operation or maintenance because we didn't spend as much that, you know, we budgeted for vehicle maintenance or building maintenance. But i- it's just too early in the game for me to attack those accounts right now. So it's, it's, it's capital.
Uh, Mr. Boz, did you want to say something?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Uh, Jim Boz, uh, town controller. Um, just a couple of things. I, I, I promise you I'd be brief. Um, I don't take a cookie cutter approach when it comes to a department, uh, who request some, some additional help. Uh, and I'm very glad you, you both are, are helping out public works tonight. I really am. Anyway, uh, every situation presents its own differences. Uh, for example, some of the stuff that popped up on the screen tonight were three items, uh, $130,000 that the table went to the police department. It did not go to the police department. I'm not going to get into the details, please. Every single item there that was presented tonight on the screen has a, a, a reason. Uh, and, and just to let you know that $30,000 did not go to the police department. It stayed within the cap and non-recurring budget from one line item in the cap and non-recurring to the police storage building, which fell about $30,000 short. Correct? Uh, and, and Mr. Shortell, you are a hundred percent correct. It was transferred. It did not go to the police operation. A cap and non-recurring, and, and you folks are, are probably sick of airing me, especially guys who have been around a long time like Benny Testa, etc. But, uh, it, that's for, we, we try to use that for infrastructure. It's so important so that we don't have to go bonding roads and, and drainage and stuff like that. So, uh, just to let you know, there, there's no one way, one pattern, uh, one cookie cutter, if you will, uh, that, that's going to address every department that, that, that comes and, and, and needs some funds to help them through the year. Um, and, and just be, be careful with, with, with some of the, some of the numbers that get thrown around. Call me on it first if you'd like. Um, you know, uh, it was a $909. I know that sounds silly. And yes, it was appropriated in cap and non-recurring for a vehicle, I believe, that public works purchased. Uh, and, and the bids came in $909, uh, too low. So that's why we put a lousy $909 to that line. I know it sounds silly, but just to complete that purchase. Uh, the other one with regards to the brothers property, $47,000 that came, uh, during the year. Um, i- if you look at when that happened, it was, I'm going to take Mr. Shortell's word for it because he's, he's, he's very accurate about these things. Um, it was in September. Well, that's only a couple of months into our new fiscal year. So on that one, coming back and saying $47,000 to come out of contingency to, let's say, a line item in, in the general fund budget, whether it would have been the law budget or, or some other budget that you know, uh, funded, would have been a, 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 a big hit very early in the fiscal year for the contingency account. So that's why we, we requested the council help us out by, by appropriating that in, in the CRRA funding. So I, I just, uh, I want you to, you folks to know that. And, and number two, please keep in mind that fire department is going to be back. Uh, you folks know that from Chief Edwards' initial, uh, request to you folks. Uh, and, and we're trying to piece our way to get to April 1st, to be honest with you. And I, I frankly, I, I expect them to be back before you folks, uh, at the next meeting. Uh, and I am looking at a contingency now. I only have 90,000 left to get me through the fiscal year. Uh, Jim Putt might have a little in his accrued. We're working on that now to help the chiefs out. Uh, and he's scraping some of his budget line items so that we can help everybody out when we come back to you a couple of weeks from tonight. Um, so just to, just to let you know there. But after April 1st, we're going to come back again, uh, for the, for that line item in the fire department. And, and, and when we responded to Jason, uh, Councilman Jason's, um, uh, question, move maybe monies from other departments to that fire department line item for replacement pay, uh, to, to, to help out there. Cause I've already had conversations with, uh, at least two department heads with regards to, uh, seeing if some of their funds are going to be available for that purpose. So, uh, sometimes it's just to buy time to get us to a different period in the budget cycle, uh, as, as we continue throughout the fiscal year. So, uh, it, it, you know, sometimes try to keep those things in mind. If you ever have any question about why you might have done something in the past, don't miss a date to call me. I, I mean, uh, I don't think I've ever not returned a call. Matter of fact, I owe, I owe our town clerk, Deb, uh, a call. She'll be, she'll be looking for some money, but she has a very, very small department. And, uh, when I talk to her, Deb, I'm, I'm going to get back to you tomorrow. I apologize. But, uh, because she has a very small budget to begin with and she basically has no place to go. Uh, so I'm going to have to get, help her out with some contingency fund transfer probably at your next meeting. So just some random thoughts, uh, by me at this time, uh, as I'm, as I'm hearing all this. No, please, no criticisms, no negatives, nothing, nothing bad air talk. But, but just to let you know that we, we, we don't do things kind of all same time for the same instance. Depends on, on several. And I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I probably went over my time, but I'm sure, you know, the generous senator from Utah would probably give me some of his. But thank you very much.
Utah. Counselor Shortell, are you the generous senator from Utah?
I, I guess. Am I like Mitt Romney? I don't know. Uh, I don't know anymore. Uh, no, I have to be quick. I, I appreciate all the comments and, and I, I want to make a point. I don't think, Jim, to your point, I don't think it's a cookie cutter approach at all. And that, that's precisely what I'm saying. I think that every situation's different. And I totally get what you're saying about you just trying to buy time to the end of the year. And I get that this is a brutal year with our winter, the issue with the fire department replacement pay. I mean, there's, there's, there's issues all over the place. Um, I'm just, my only point though was that if Rob really, really needed the plow truck at the last meeting, you guys would have bought it. Because like you brought the scale for the dump using CRRA funds, you know, two years ago or three years ago. That, that was my point. Every situation's different. Um, I'm just pointing out that these are choices and there's other ways to fund things. That's all I'm trying to point out. Um, and you know, to Counsel Laughlin's point, I agree, the hour-long discussions on these things get tedious. Put it on consent. That's how you avoid that.
I could not do that tonight because it came in as a wave rule five and it came in after the ability for the council to remove it from consent.
What about last?
It's not some deliberate effort on my part to create a discussion.
What about last time? What about the, uh, the first time?
The dollar amount. You guys get upset when they're.
Expensiveness on consent. All right. Don't, don't, give me a break. It was to prove a point, point proven. But don't expect people who you're trying to prove the point to, to not react. Thank you.
I didn't have a choice this time. So you're welcome. Counselor Marone. I'm all set, Mr. Chairman. My question was about the consent, but, uh, Chris has already got you upset about that. So I'll let you off, though. There was a question from Jacqueline Serna. There was a question from Jacqueline Serna. Questions from the public. There being none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Laughlin.
Yeah.
Marone.
Yes.
Morganstein.
Yes.
Chertel.
Yes.
Tada.
Yes.
Testa.
Yes.
Xandry.
Yes.
Chairman Cervoni.
Yes. Oh, yes. The motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Happy tonight. Thank you.
All right. Uh, next item up is the COVID-19 report. Mr. Civitelli. I will offer you my screen.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. How are you? Good evening, members of the council.
Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, hope all of you are well. We'll, we'll jump right into it as we normally do. We could hop to this second. Let's see. Um, again, so as we normally go over, uh, total number of cases in town. Um, obviously over the last several months, cases have risen dramatically, but as you can see there from December to January, the cases have dropped. Um, in the subsequent slides, you will see that, uh, case rates have dropped roughly 30% over the last six weeks in town and relatively across the state, as I'm sure many of you are aware, the positivity rate is now below five. Um, was hovering around three and a half. So, um, in the coming slides, we'll, we'll look at that as well. Another thing, uh, that is a, of a positive note is, uh, since our last report on 126, uh, hospitalizations have, um, been reduced roughly 23%. So that's usually, that's a good indicator of where things are moving going forward. Um, unfortunately our fatalities have risen, however, on, on the other side of the coin. Um, we have a total 152 fatalities in town as of this point. Again, predominantly most of those fatal, uh, fatalities are in long-term care facilities. Um, and again, as I mentioned previous, previously, um, all facilities in town have received their first shot of, of either Pfizer or Moderna vaccine and have, are scheduled or have already gotten their second shot of vaccine, which is something that's positive to mention. Um, and again, the total number of tests were noted there in the slide. Um, again, noted here is the, uh, again, the number of 14 day rolling averages. Again, these are down roughly 30% from six weeks ago, uh, from right around Thanksgiving where we were at roughly 66 uh, cases per day on a given average are now down around 44. Um, so again, that's definitely something that it could either be, um, an effect of vaccinations and/or combined with some of the reopen guidance and, um, you know, post-holiday drop. Again, as we continue, uh, throughout the pandemic, we still are doing our contact tracing. Um, in the community right now, we have 68 folks that we're, we're monitoring as well as looking at, uh, monitoring the school situation, which is something that's discussed frequently with the public schools, Kathy Nealon, um, nurse coordinator and Dr. Menzo. Um, something that we work on pretty much on a daily basis at this point. Um, so I just wanted to give everyone just a brief, uh, idea of what we're actually doing in terms of vaccine clinics. Obviously that's, um, the primary thing that we're dealing with right now. What you'll see here is a list of the clinics that have been completed. There's some that were done previous to this, going back to December 28th. Um, but it would have took up too much room on our slides here to start showing all the clinics that we've done. But as of late, um, we've done several first dose clinics. Um, obviously you could see how many were done and when, um, and then in the subsequent slide after this, you will see the ones that are scheduled moving forward right now. Um, so what we've done in town, which is something that's relatively unique compared to other municipalities and/or the hospital systems that are offering vaccine. We don't normally make appointments for, um, vaccine and give people dates, weeks or months out unless we know we have the vaccine to meet the required, meet that appointment. So typically what we do is when we receive our vaccine on Monday, we schedule folks for that coming Thursday. So we know what we have. We know how many folks we could schedule. And it's worked very well so far where we've actually been able to, um, vaccinate a large portion, as you'll see in the next slide of our, um, community 75 and up. Um, so I just wanted to provide some stats there. Um, we have roughly 13% of our Wallingford residents um, have had their first dose. That's, uh, roughly 5,835 folks here in town. When we're looking at Wallingford residents that are 75 and older that have received their first dose, that is at 58%. I believe the number is slightly higher, as of the, the today, it's probably closer to 65%. And one thing of note that I'd like to point out too, is that Wallingford is in, at number six right now in total, uh, vaccinations for those 75 and older. Um, and that's just totals numbers across the state. So between us, um, the health department and CVS and Masonic and the work that had been done in the, in the long-term care facilities, um, we're, we're definitely getting to that target population that's at the highest risk, uh, statewide and, and we're very proud of that. And then I think the last two slides are something that we had last time, uh, of the clinic setup. So, um, again, I just wanted to have that. We are still operating out of the senior center. Um, again, we're still doing our clinic one day a week at this point. And again, I'll, I'll take any questions from the council at this point.
Counselor Chertel.
I think Council Morganstein was first, not, not to.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's correct.
Counselor Morganstein. Well, I can't do anything right.
Yes. Yes, you can. Thank you, Chairman Cervoni. Um, thank you, Steve. Um, so what, my first question, Steve, is we're doing very well in Wallingford and we are a community, um, that has an active senior population. Um, but I had sent you an email and we had talked last time about, um, what efforts are being done for the non, um, handy with electronics and such population, people who really don't have an active primary care or don't have a relationship with a pharmacy. And I guess this is a bigger question than even just Wallingford. Do you have a general feeling as to the state of Connecticut? Um, outreach wise, um, because I think I see a lot of it being done electronically and, um, media based. Um, does the state have a plan in place for the people who really might be more of a shut-in or a, you know, um, homeless population, a population that really is difficult to contact?
Um, yeah. So, so great question. And at this point, I think what we're seeing is, um, there's a lot of plans that are in process. So kind of how we're doing our clinics, our clinics are done phone-based. So we actually put, um, folks into VAMS, the Vaccine Management System that's through CDC, that's creating a lot of issues for, for folks across the state and across the country, to be honest. Um, we're actually doing that work on the backend for our residents to make their lives easier. Essentially when they call us, we take their information, we put them in the system and then we schedule an appointment with them. So to your question, and this is maybe somewhat, uh, some, um, some news for folks here is that um, we've had some discussions as a town, um, at, with Oakdale and Hartford Healthcare is going to be opening up a mega site at Oakdale in the coming weeks. Um, they have, we've had two meetings with them and tomorrow I am walking, doing a walkthrough with, uh, with their folks um, to try and get an idea of what that's going to look like. So, um, so the reason for me mentioning that is one, it's, it's great that a regional asset will be here in town and something that, um, you know, they're talking about potentially doing a few thousand vaccines per week. And what my thoughts are, um, moving forward is as that regional site opens, I think what may happen is that the local health departments will start to scale back their operations from doing hundreds per week to starting to hit those pocket areas in their own local towns that we know are underserved and start, um, trying to go to people. Um, right now I'm trying to reach as many folks as we can because, uh, we are the only operator in town that offers vaccine. I also wanted to stress that we are only receiving, uh, last week I received 100 doses of vaccine and the previous weeks I had received 200. So, um, that 1,100 folks that we had had on that waiting list, I could gladly report today that as of this Thursday, we'll have less than 100 left on our waitlist that are 75 and older. And once that list is completed, we tend on shifting right over to those 65 and older. Um, at this point, we do not have any other pharmacies scheduled to come online. I know that there's roughly 12 statewide that are looking at, uh, really Walmart too, has been something that's, um, Walmart locations are starting to offer vaccines statewide. I believe in New Haven as well. Um, so to, to your question, I think the plan is evolving. I think early on and I, this, the council probably knows better than most. Early on, we were talking more about doing a critical workforce, right? And we were talking about our critical infrastructure employees. And when the allocation committee shifted gears as to when in, uh, a certain demographics would be served, we also adapted. And so then we had to stand up our program to serve those 75 and older and now 65 and older. Um, so again, to your, to your point, I think the plan is evolving. And as more larger operators are available in communities for mass vaccination, it will allow local health departments to, to do as you're describing, go after the vulnerable populations.
And is there, and I don't know, privacy wise or just logistic wise, is there record keeping of who has been vaccinated? So you can figure out if you put a plan in place, who has not been vaccinated at a state level? Do we know if such a thing is being done?
Uh, uh, at this point in time, I have access to those who I have done, but I do not have access to other, say the hospitals or other local health departments that may have vaccinated, uh, other first responders in their towns who work, say in Cheshire or North Haven. I do not have access to that right now.
But, but it would seem, I mean, I know when I did mine through Hartford Healthcare, they clearly aren't just, you know, they are working through their computer system. So, um, again, I had mentioned to you some thought of something like a reverse 911. So if the state were able to know that, okay, here's the list of who has gotten, um, it does sound like there could be some capability to figure out perhaps who has not. Okay. And then my next question, um, kind of completely different. So, um, there was talk earlier about, um, the media department and how well we do things electronically and such. And I had sent you also an email regarding, um, I think it's tomorrow morning. The, um, rec department's, um, monthly meeting, um, appearing to have a good bit of interest due to a topic that came out on social media. Um, and what I just heard this evening is that there is a plan to, um, use their gymnasium rather than they usually just use a single room within the building. Um, you know, it's the sort of thing where all these months, we're almost at a year now and the rec department has their monthly meeting and through no fault of theirs, because it typically is not a meeting that, um, gets anything other than um, the department and a rare member of the public, um, they have not had any, um, remote meeting capability. So here we are faced tomorrow, if the numbers of people who on Facebook were up in arms about an issue, um, actually turn up, um, i- it has me quite nervous that people are putting themselves at risk or people are not coming out and expressing their viewpoints because they don't want to be putting themselves at risk.
So, um, I did speak with Kenny as well as Janice when, after you made me aware, um, as other counselors had made me aware that there was going to be a public meeting. And I referred back to executive order 9H, which was signed. Uh, I don't remember exactly when it was signed, but um, in executive order 9H, there is a section in there that does make reference to, um, the ability to have a public meeting virtually, but also there makes a, the reference to further down in the, um, executive order that if a municipal body is conducting an in-person meeting, they have to have a discussion with their local health department to have, um, I want to read it here. Take steps to recommend by the local state health officials to conduct such meetings in a manner that significantly reduces the risk of transmission to COVID-19. So, um, after talking to Kenny, again, it's, uh, they made the decision to have the meeting in public, in person. So then my job is to try and guide them as to how to do it as safely as possible. So here's what we came up with. Social distancing is required, obviously a minimum of six feet. Masking will be required for the meeting. Um, the gym is going to be required to be cleaned before and after the meeting. Hand sanitizer will have to be available for the meeting and a member of the park and rec, um, staff will have to be there to ensure that these guidelines are met for holding the public meeting. Um, so that's, that's what we've had also in our guidance that was provided to commissions and boards previously, but we reiterated that knowing that this may be an event where you get 25 to 50 people at it. Um, and then in the gym, it definitely is one area that, um, lends itself to, uh, provide social distancing.
Yeah. So, um, I appreciate that. And so to this council and to Mr. Mayor, I would respectfully say, as people have been saying for many, many years, um, internet across town buildings is really a must because, um, it's, you're making things safe and you're following the order. But the reality is that I would be quite certain, including my husband, um, there are people that will not feel safe to do that. Um, whether just for personal preference during a pandemic or considerable medical risk. Um, and so I always am the one to say we as a governmental body need to be available to the people and, um, internet has been so long overdue. And again, that's not your issue, um, with the health department, but I would address that to our mayor and to this body that finding money to do such a thing should also be part of our priority. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Counselor Morganstein.
Counselor Chertel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, and Steve, hi. Thank you for everything you're doing. Um,
Good evening.
I mean, I have two, really two questions. The Council Morganstein addressed one of them. I, I don't, I guess I'm, I'll, I was going to start with the other one, but I'll, I'll just kind of go off what Council Morganstein said. I, I don't know why any border commission is having in-person meetings. We're in month 11. Um, I know the buildings were closed until July and they reopened. And so I guess I, as a, as a counselor, I, I just have to say, I mean, I mean, mayor, would you consider, mayor, you, with a stroke of your pen, you could tell every, I know you don't want to dictate to boards and commissions because we've, we've talked about this before and I, I get that. But with a stroke of your pen, you could say, there shall be no border commission meeting in a Wallingford building until the pandemic is over, until the government or the CDC, until guidelines are met, period. Is that something you would consider?
Well, what do we say about the schools? If it's safe to be in school, how is it not safe to be in a government building? We've, we've, we have the town hall open. We have all of our buildings open. Business has to be transacted. So if we're saying it's not safe for a public meeting, how do we have employees showing up for work? I mean, it's, it is safe. I mean, Steve can tell you that the, the issues over safety in the public buildings, including the school buildings, it's, it's a very, it's almost non-existent that we have any indication of a transmission of COVID within the public, public buildings. So to close it down, I don't think does anything for public confidence regarding the directives, the advice being given by public health. Public health is not saying you have to shut all the buildings down. They're saying, you know, using, using the building, use it with the proper protocols.
Uh, let me rephrase. I'm not saying shut the buildings down like everybody. Um, that's not what I was saying. I meant to public meetings. That's what I meant. I didn't mean shut down the build. What I meant was no public meetings in a town building. And to the point about schools, schools are very regulated. You have certain numbers. Regulated, you have certain number of kids per class, you know who's in each class, it's completely apples to oranges. A meeting. You don't know who's going to show up at a meeting. You could have a hundred people from the public, you could have three people from the public. You have no idea who's going to show up. That's the concern. That's the difference. That's the random variable. In schools, you have to wear a mask, they've completely reconfigured the desks. Everything, they've changed everything about how they conduct business in the schools. What I'm saying is for public meetings. You could say tonight, you could do a memo tomorrow and say, there will not be a public meeting in any town building until this crisis is over. And I believe you should. Maybe I'm the only, you know, I know Councilor Morganstein talked about the internet and I guess that's the other piece of this. But I I just, to me, this is public safety. We talk about the the water being clean and and the roads getting plowed and thi- this is part of that. This is a essential service of government. And you cannot predict at a public meeting who's going to show up. Most of the time, no one goes to our meetings. But. You, every so often, you get those meetings that draw large crowds and it's our job to keep those people safe. Um. Steve, uh, my second question. Along those lines is about community pool because that's our next agenda item. And my question is around. Uh, what you and I emailed about earlier today or yesterday, um, what would, what would you, I'm not comfortable opening pool this year. Um, I I, but I want, I'm not an expert. So I'd like your, you know, what is your thought? What do, what do you want to see in terms of uh? I don't know positivity rate, vaccination rate, wha- what do you want to see in in the summer as we get closer to those months? That would make you comfortable with with something like community pool even being open?
Uh, that's a great question, Counselor Shortell, and and I thank you for that. So um. You know, it's funny, uh, our, my position has been, I think our office position has been throughout the pandemic is um. We evaluate the reopen guidance that's in place and we try and enact it in in a way that. Um, we can continue to operate businesses. So. To your question with the pool, right now, um, indoor public, indoor pools are operating but at limited capacity. Um, and so when you're looking at the community pool for the summer. What I would have to say is is that obviously I would think that. The um, governor's orders, if they're still in effect, which. I have, at this point, I have no reason to believe that they won't be. There probably will be some guidance provided by the state for outdoor. Recreational activities as it relates to community pools. What that may look like, that could be up for discussion. I I have not, I have asked. Um, many questions about what uh, things may look like five months from now. There's a lot of health directors that we've asked about, um, you know, Memorial Day parades. Is that something that's a realistic expectation moving forward because we'll have been vaccinating for several months at that point? And hopefully at that point, it's readily available at your local pharmacy. So um. I think that. We're gonna have to. I'm gonna assume that if the positivity rate is where it was last summer, under one. And our case rates per day are relatively low. That, you know, w- we'll have to evaluate that at at that point, but for for right now, I think that if there were some guidelines. In place for the pools uh, for exterior, we would certainly uh, make sure that that was followed. Um, but to to forecast that, I I'm gonna struggle with that at this point in all honesty.
No, I I get, it's an unfair, it's it's, yeah, it's an unfair question. I I mean, given where we are, we don't know what.
But here's one thing I will say. So I think everybody's pretty much understands where my position is, is if something is allowed by the state, I am not gonna go out of my way to stop it. Because, you know, that it's been permitted and I think you run into more problems when you go above and beyond and shut certain areas of. The economy down, um. That's permitted by the state. I I've seen it happen in some towns where. Um, things have gone above and beyond and it's created some issues. So. Um, in, you know, we tend to try and follow the guidance that's provided by executive orders and the reopen guidance. Sometimes it could be tricky because every business in every community is a little unique. Um, and then we've had our challenges to be sure, but but um, you know, obviously we'll we'll take all the. Considerations into account when we're evaluating the community pool, whether it's uh, you know. Limiting capacity, if social distancing is even, is possible there. Um, what that would actually look like, uh, it would yet to be seen.
Yep, understood. Uh, again, thank you for everything uh, you're doing and um. But thank you, it's it's very much appreciated. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
No, thank you. Thank you, Counselor Shortell.
Counselor Todd.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hi, Mr. Shortelli. Uh, my question is about the vaccines. So um. Somebody had asked me earlier this week when the, they heard that the sixty-five. Um, and older could start uh, making appointments for vaccines. They had mentioned that they, they wanted to get one in Wallingford. Um, but they, they couldn't get one till farther out and so they ended up. Getting one in a town and I think Bridgeport, um, you know, they're gonna take the drive. Down there to get it earlier. So I was just wondering. How, how does it work? Is, are, are, I assume the vaccines we're offering are only for Wallingford residents and. Um, how does someone go about calling to set that up? Basically, if they want to get one in Wallingford and not have to take a drive somewhere else, um, who do they call and? How does that work?
It's a, it's a great question and it's actually one that um. Is somewhat discouraging to me in that. Um. We're built to do m- many more vaccines per week than we're permitted. So um, the perfect example I can give you is that, all right, so to answer you the second part of your question, they would just call the health department and we would put them on our list. And then as vaccine becomes available, we go right down the list and get to everybody, which is what we did with our folks seventy-five and older. What we found was happening was is because we had a thousand people on a waitlist and I was only receiving two hundred vaccines a week, the math bears out that even though I could do. Three to four hundred vaccinations in a given day, if I'm only given two hundred a week. It throttles me back significantly. So it took us five weeks to get to those thousand folks and some of the folks. Um, you know, were able to get appointments elsewhere quicker and we encouraged them to do that. I think because the supply is so limited in Connecticut where there's sixty thousand, uh, well. I think last week there was only fifty-two thousand vaccines provided to the state of Connecticut and there's so many. Um, you know, the hospitals take a a big chunk of that. And some of the other community health centers take another chunk of that, that the towns are left with very little. And that creates problems for us because to be quite honest with you. Um, the eight hundred to a thousand residents we've done have really been pleased with how it's gone and they want to stay local. And I want to make that possible for them. The struggle I have, and I talked to the mayor about this today because it's quite frustrating. Is that we've built a program with Choate, with Masonic, with the fire department, with even All Next has been supporting our efforts with their uh, occupational nurse. Um, you know, uh, with the schools, we've built a a really great program. But we are throttled back by supply and it's very frustrating where I could do my entire waitlist in a week and a half. And it'll take me five weeks because of what I'm receiving. And that allocation is decided directly by the state. Um, an example is I always order more and receive less. So last week, for example, I ordered five hundred and I received two hundred. Um, the week prior, I did the same and I received a hundred. So. Um, I am banging my head against the wall. I think it's the mayor could tell you multiple times. I was in his office today frustrated by. Um, the ma- the demand and the supply not meeting it. And and obviously that's not unique to us, but. As an advocate for Wallingford, I have to keep fighting for as much vaccine as I can get. So that I could keep our folks here and they're, I think they're safer here and I think we could serve them better here than sending them elsewhere. The real issue I'm running into is is the supply. How Oakdale opening up a regional site impacts our supply will be to be determined. Um, I've asked that question of the state and I am awaiting answers. So that that could be another wrinkle that we had not anticipated earlier.
Yeah, okay. Um. Yeah, I was very impressed with. You know, the infrastructure you set up. So that's, I'm sure that's extremely frustrating that you can't get the supply if we're able to handle it, but um. But a- all of our, basically if somebody were to to call you to set up a vaccine, we're. We are only offering them to Wallingford residents, correct?
W- we are, we are trending to, we are trying to market to Wallingford residents.
Okay.
Yes, and and to be quite honest with you, there are. Um, to some degree, because the vaccine is received by the federal government and it's free, that we receive it free, that. There probably is some, you know, obligation to take folks outside of town, but. Because, and I've had this conversation with the mayor as well, we receive so little per capita for our residents that. We really skew it towards Wallingford residents now, you know, and and that's the position that we've taken. We're using. Our local assets and um, that's what we're trying to target. That's our target group. And I think we've done that successfully because we've vaccinated a good. Portion of our seventy-five and older population to the point where we're in the top six. Which I was really happy about, where we're, we're up there with some of the, you know, towns that are are. Doing for quite well. So I was pretty happy with that.
Yeah, that's, that was impressive. Um. If, if people are in that situation where they, they call you and they have to, you know, wait and then they get one. You know, through a hospital or some somewhere else earlier, do you find that they're calling you and canceling or have you had situations where you have? You know, people no shows and then, and then what are you doing?
Yeah, so that's a great question. So what happens is when we initially take the person's name, we tell them and and obviously right now with sixty-five and up. Um, opening up, i- we have hundreds of people on a waitlist and we've told them quite honestly, and it's frustrating for me to even say it out loud, that. It's gonna be several weeks before we get to people and and it bothers me to even say that. Again, I talked to the mayor about that today. I'm. I don't like telling people they have to wait because we're built to do, we're built to be better than this. But again, it's just a supply issue at this point. So um, so say we have uh, our clinic this Thursday, we have two hundred and seventy people that are seventy-five and older scheduled. Um. If several people cancel for whatever reason, whether it's snow, they can't get there, we have a alternate list that is. In that same target group, whether it's seventy-five and older, um, sometimes it's hard to rush somebody who's. You know, seventy-five, eighty years old to come running down to the senior center. So we'll probably go to our sixty-five and older list. Uh, we have plenty of people to serve and and those are the ones we're gonna go after. So. Um, my hope is in the coming weeks, whether it's Oakdale coming online where we have a. You know, right now, when I refer people, we, I don't have a lot of confidence when I refer them out that they're gonna be served. And so we tell them, listen, I will take you on our list, it's gonna be several weeks and we could also give you this Hartford healthcare number or. Really, that's the only other number I have at this point or the state hotline, which I think is gonna maybe divert people back to us anyways. Um. Where, you know, we tell them, it it could be, you know, several weeks, but we are just gonna keep going through the list until every, everybody is done. And um, I I could honestly tell you, I have never been in a situation like this where. We feel that we could do more and we are being held back by a an entity that is controlling the supply. It it is, it is frustrating.
Yeah, sure, we, we hear. So, you know, I've heard on the news the opposite happening, so.
Well, and one thing I will say, I'm sorry to interrupt, I, one thing that is relatively unique about our clinics and and. Is that I am not gonna make an appointment for somebody and have to cancel it because we do not have the supply. So when we receive our vaccine on Monday, I know I could confidently schedule. You know, X number of people for that Thursday. When we get our second dose shots from the state, they guarantee that. Um, you know, the Moderna vaccine we re- is is um, every four, every twenty-eight days, you, after twenty-eight days, excuse me, you come back to get your second shot. We are told after three weeks, we receive that vaccine. Um, to replenish for that second dose vaccine clinic, um, because we see everybody twice. What we don't do that I think some other facilities are doing is they're using second dose shots to give people their first doses. We will not do that because we do not want to have what I think is happening across the state where many people are calling us because their second doses have been canceled. And so w- we are these, you know, we will just stay the course and make sure that when you get one, we give you a card saying, we will see you in four weeks for your second shot. The only roadblock that may have, that we could have is if that second dose never shows up. And again, that's totally right on the supplier. Um, and um, something that is somewhat out of our hands, but we we try to be as diligent as we can to not use those for first dose shots.
Yeah, makes sense. Um, that's all I have. Thank you. It helps, it helps to know, um, you know, I'm sure all of the healthors are, you know, we get questions about things sometimes. So this is helpful for us to. Be able to give the right info. Thank you.
Well, and it's funny too, I I don't want to belabor the point, but w- we've had plans for years for mass vaccination and this. Process that we've put into place last minute has, it was not in place. We knew that this was gonna have to be a phone-based system, that we were gonna have to control the supply because we were the only. Operator in town for at least a short term. Now we're going on. Nine, eight, nine weeks now. We are the only one in town offering vaccine to residents. Um, m- my hope is is that there will be other operators coming on soon. That'll help. Maybe I could refer them to somewhere where I feel confident. And I think that's what Oakdale will be, that site. Where I said, you know, uh, we could do two hundred folks a week that, you know. And then here's, you know, here's the Oakdale site where we could confidently say you'll, you'll be done in adequate time.
Yeah, great. All right, thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Counselor Laughlin.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Steve, uh, thank you again. Uh, and I know as if you weren't already busy enough with all this going on, you took on the governor's vaccination committee. Which I'm sure has been, you know, crucial in figuring all this out and staying ahead of us and keeping Wallingford ahead. To the rest of the state. So so thank you again. And I wanted to comment, I uh, have relatives seventy-five and older. Um, that's received their vaccinations through town and they were just really impressed. It kind of, it totally was not what they were expecting. Um, it was very calm, orderly, uh, everything was very reassuring. Um, they, they were really expecting, you know, something probably out of a movie or I think or whatever. Um, and they, they appreciated the the ease of the phone call. I know others that have um, that have had to use the VAM system, uh, which is the online system for the federal government programs, distribution mechanisms. Um, i- it's complicated, gotta be walked through. We're, we're helping a lot of people kind of walk through. Those cases. So the simple phone call was good, the follow-up was great. Um, I think it it just, I just wanted to give you that feedback that um, that they were, they were very happy with the whole process and and felt very proud. Um, the, the waitlist, you. You've talked about the waitlist, but you haven't given a number. Is that on purpose or are you comfortable giving a number or no?
Uh, so our waitlist for seventy-five and older is now under a hundred. I don't know the exact number. Um, so, uh, so the, the actual number, waitlist for sixty-five and older, I don't have that number readily available. Um, but I I would imagine that, you know, when I had last left the office, it was, you know, at least over four or five hundred.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, so I mean, and so, and so, and to my point, so we are, we're gonna probably finish our seventy-five and older group. I would think on the eighteenth. And have maybe a partial clinic available for those sixty-five and older. So if I'm still receiving two hundred vaccines per week. Um, it'll take, you know, two or three weeks and we'll get through that, that grouping. I think. Um, you know, I, it has been a struggle with trying to determine. Because if I receive a hundred one week, that throws me back another week. And and so that's why when residents call, I'm very, and I, and our staff have. We've had this discussion amongst the staff, that there were different mindsets about h- how we provide timelines because folks need to know and we want to be respectful and give real answers. Um, it's so hard to project it out. We, we don't want to um. We want to be honest and we, at this point, we just don't know. We, we just don't feel overly confident that it'll be within a week or so. Um, if we had a steady supply, then we would be, you know, feel really good about it, but we usually say it's gonna be. You know, three to four weeks before we get to you based on supply. And I I hate even saying it that way, but that's, that's the unfortunate reality that we're in and and we find that. If we're honest with folks, then they tend to at least, you know, have a, have an understanding of where we're, where we're going.
Great. Well, thank you again.
Thank you, Counselor.
I'm all set, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Counselor Zandry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. How you doing? Uh, Stephen, how you, how you holding out?
I'm doing okay, thank you, Counselor Zandry.
It really wasn't a loaded question I was like genuinely asking.
No, I appreciate that, yeah.
I, I just have a, one quick question and and another thing that that I just kind of got brought to my attention thinking about it and reading some stuff. So when you had your vaccination rate slide earlier and you had a percentage, is that the number, like, you know, you had a, a. A number for the age bracket of people. Is that a number of people that have signed up that want to get it or is, you know, because I'm, I'm curious how it plays for people that, no, no, I'm not gonna get the vaccination. That would impact those numbers. So when you gave those numbers, like a hundred people signed up. And we got fifty-eight of them done, so we're fifty-eight percent. Are those the numbers that you're giving us percentage-wise?
No, that's a great question. So the um. The twenty-ten census said, states that Wallingford has four thousand seventeen individuals over the age of seventy-five years old in town. So the total number of vaccinations that have been provided in town to meet that demographic have been two thousand three hundred and thirty-three. So in actuality, we have hit fifty-eight percent of that entire population. So realistically, there may not be any more that want that, the vaccine. Um, they say if there's a seventy percent acceptance rate on the vaccine, we're pretty close to getting where we need to go.
All right, and that, and that, that's why I wanted that clarified. So now, now it brings you to another question. So. All right. And that, and that, that's why I wanted that clarified. So now it now it brings me to another question. So that's important to know because then there's, there's always going to be some discussion, whether it's town by town or state by state. What, why are we failing to get certain numbers of people over seventy five vaccinated? Why are we failing when we move to the next bracket? A certain amount, because you can't make people get vaccinated. So that's, that's one thing that I want to stress to everyone. The other, the other thing that I'd like to ask is, if you know it, what is the threshold that moves us to another stage? In other words, we're never going to get to a hundred, a hundred percent of of that bracket of people because there's always people that are not going to do it. When do they make the decision to move over to the next bracket of people?
That decision is, I believe, something that comes down from the governor's office directly, was my understanding. I think they really weigh the number of appointments that are available and slots that are available to how much vaccine is coming in statewide. So there must have been a ratio where they said, okay, there's X number of appointments available where we can now move to the next phase. For us locally, again, saying that, you know, this Thursday, I'm going to have two hundred and seventy folks vaccinated, then I'll have roughly a hundred left to do on the eighteenth, which will take care of our list. What I think is happening to Counselor Laffin's point is that folks are pretty comfortable with staying in town. And so we were, we will probably have, you know, lag in our list because folks don't really want to leave town. And and I'm 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 happy about that because that means we're doing something right. And we don't want to treat folks like, you know, we're herding cattle. We want to treat them like the residents and the people that they are. So we'd rather do it safely and efficiently. So to your point, we don't know, I don't have the exact rubric as to how the state decides to move to the next step.
All right. And that's okay. You know, I, if you knew it, I wanted to know if you could disseminate it to us. If you if you didn't know, you didn't know.
I will say that this group is going to take us a long time in my estimation. I, the seventy five and older took roughly four to five weeks and that was two hundred thousand folks in the state. This next grouping of sixty five and older, my understanding is three hundred and fifty thousand folks. So I I've heard there would be some discussion of it being done in the same timeframe. However, I I really think you're looking at six to eight weeks for this group.
Yeah, not without, not without the supply. No, I agree with you.
Yeah.
So when you make these appointments now, when we move into the next bracket, it's it's inclusive of both groups. In other words, before it was seventy five and older, and those are the only ones who could sign up. Now it's not like you're holding a small bucket for seventy five year olds and then we're going to open a bigger bucket for sixty five year olds. It's basically everybody sixty five and up gets whatever we got this week based on signups, correct?
So kind of how we've done it where we'll satisfy the current list of those seventy five and older. And then once that current list is satisfied, then we will start jumping into. So now, say, two weeks from now, we have somebody who's a healthcare worker who is seventy five years old or somebody who's seventy five years old. We'll put them in with that list of sixty five, but we're just going to go right down the list of sixty five folks. That priority time was set. And then, I don't know, I mean, that was just our mindset where we want to satisfy the group that we had already promised. And then once that group was set, we were going to move right to the sixty five year old folks and up and then just start hitting that list as best we could.
No, and and I think that make, yeah, no, and I think that makes sense. I think it's logical. It's kind of like, you know, when you, you know, you're boarding airplane, they call the section in front of you, then the next section, and if someone was supposed to be in front of you, they just get in line too and move along. They just got there late. So I I think that makes sense. When, when you're doing your signups and and like you said, you're trying to treat, you know, treat the wall for people that want to stay local, when they do things like maybe go through their doctor or, you know, like I know that there's the the system online, the My My Chart Plus system. If they sign up through that, will they get redirected to you? Or do they have to specifically get, you know, go and sign up with you directly?
Yeah. So if they, if they use My Chart, that'll be something, that'll be a Hartford Healthcare-related facility. And I believe Yale has a separate system that they use. So if they're looking to have us do it, it's a direct phone call to us.
So so that's, that's good for people to know because I know a lot of people use the My Chart. I use it myself. So if I, when it gets to to be the point of the next bracket down and it's my turn to get into that pool, if I use My Chart, I may end up being shuttled elsewhere where, rather than calling, you know, the Health Department directly.
Yeah, we had, we had looked internally about a million different ways to set up call lines and really, everybody knows the two zero six five number for the Health Department. So we just left it as is and we just basically said, okay, call us, we're ready. And we'll take the names and as they come in, that's the order in which we'll we'll vaccinate.
All right, perfect.
Many, many people were surprised at how easy it was. I I will say, because I I took a lot of phone calls this morning and that's our job. We're not here to make this hard. I think this this last year has been hard enough for for everyone and in the in our community. So this is the one thing that I think we could do to make life a little easier.
No, I I agree. And I guess that's, that's a good distinction for people to know. If they're comfortable going through their provider and and the system and getting it set up and go visit their own doctor, that's great. If they, if they want to stay, stay at home and keep it in Wallingford, they can do that as well. So that that's great. So those, those are all my questions. Thank you again, Mr. Sivatelli, for everything you do. And Mr. Chairman, I'm all set.
Thank you, Counselors Andrew.
Counselor Testa.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hello, Steve. How are you?
Good evening, Mr. Testa. How are you?
I'm doing well. Thank you. One question, as I've been looking at signing up an elderly relative and also wondering about even myself and people I know. One thing I'm trying to get a handle on, how is the, I get, people are asked, do you have underlying medical conditions? And how is that being factored into prioritizing who receives a vaccine? Because it seemed to me that there's the phase one people, then there's the phase one B people and it seems like underlying medical condition seems to be on equal footing with age sixty five. Is that how it is?
It it's a little different than that. So the governor's phases, so he had the one A, which was medical first responders, healthcare workers, et cetera, right? Then he opened up one B, which really covers most of the state. One B has roughly one point four million residents. So what they had to do was try and stratify that group of one B to meet the demand or meet the supply that was coming into the state. So then they said, okay, one B will first be seventy five and older, regardless of conditions. And once they felt that that group was satisfied to the point where they could open up to the next group, which is now sixty five to seventy four year olds, regardless of condition. Now, there's been some discussion about the next grouping being eighteen to sixty four year olds that have pre-existing conditions. What those conditions are, I believe CDC has twelve conditions that they've identified of being high risk related to COVID. But again, that is something that is still being discussed in the allocation committee, the one that I'm actually a part of. So fortunately, I'm I'm a part of those discussions. Then there's also the critical workforce piece, which includes Board of Ed employees, the rest of the town workforce, utilities, et cetera. So there's going to have to be some more stratifying based on only getting, say, fifty or sixty thousand doses per week into the state and having hundreds of thousands of people in these groups. So I don't know if that exactly answers your question, but I I think I did.
Well, if somebody's in one of those groups.
Yep.
And and they have underlying medical conditions, do they, are they prioritized?
Oh, so so right now I take anybody who's sixty five and older, regardless of their condition. So I I have not gone through the, to get their medical history to prioritize folks based on their medical conditions. I have not. I can tell you that when they go to our medical station to get vaccinated, they are asked about their medical conditions. If they have what their prescriptions are, et cetera. Some of that guidance is changing as of late. But initially, for the last several clinics we have, which which we like, is that, you know, you have a nurse or a paramedic at each station. They go over your medications with you. Again, we're trying to, you know, take care of people. This is, you know, while we're trying to run a mass vaccination clinic, we're also trying to care for our residents. So we want to do it right. And to your point, so we have not stratified that group, no. The general public, we have not stratified. I know that there's been some discussion about doing that for other groups, but at this point, there has not been any.
Okay, thanks. I was just curious if the general guidelines from the government called out any, any, you know, steps or, you know, on how to do something like that.
Not as of yet, but I think they will be. I think they will be in the in the next phase. I agree.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Testa.
Counselor Morganstein, did you want to comment again?
No, no, oh, no, I was just making a comment with a previous, that was just a general. No, I'm, I don't need to talk anymore. Thank you.
Okay. Questions or comments from the public? Nobody online? Anybody on the phone want to comment? All right. Thank you, Mr. Sivatelli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Have a good evening.
Thanks you too.
Take care, everyone.
On to item seven, which is discussion regarding the status of community pool and plans for future improvements requested by Counselor Testa. Additionally, we have Counselor Shortell, who is our liaison to the pool committee. The agenda failed to note that. My apologies. Counselor Testa.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I asked for this agenda item to simply get an update on where things might be and then get a feeling of everybody, from everybody as to where they'd like to see it go from here. And my first priority would be to turn it over to Counselor Shortell so he could give his report to us. And this was pretty much an opportunity to within that forum and then see where it take, we take it from there. But the, that's it. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Testa and Mr. Chairman. I'll try to make this brief. And I I did send a memo to the council of, after I spoke with you, Counselor Testa, I did put some thoughts to paper on January twenty second and emailed that. So I'm just going to kind of go off that, that memo that I wrote. But basically, we've had a pool committee meeting in late September, September twenty ninth. And at that meeting, Counselor Todd, I was also in attendance at that meeting. I want to acknowledge that. And basically talked through kind of the outcome of the tour that we did. We did a tour town council tour of the pool in August. And I thought that was a really good, I appreciate everyone from Parks and Rec or, you know, doing that and getting the 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 right people there. We walked through the whole pool and the, you know, the chemical house. And I think it gave a good, good sense to the council. Those of us who maybe don't use the pool or haven't used it in recent years, the condition of the pool and and how it operates and kind of how it operates on a on a, on a thread sometimes, you know, very narrowly sometimes, just to get it, get it going for the year. So we talked a lot about that at that pool committee meeting. I know Counselor Todd did raise the 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 point about could we renovate what we have? I don't want to, you know, she may have comments on that herself. I don't want to steal her thunder. I think the upshot from the the discussion we had on the twenty ninth was that to renovate what we have is basically a replication of the job we did in nineteen ninety nine. So it cost about two million dollars to do that. Then the assumption, very, I mean, the rough assumption would be it would cost, you know, three to four million to replicate that job now and you'd have to write bid specs. So there was some discussion about that. That was not, the committee wasn't a fan of that concept. But I mean, that doesn't mean the council can't be. So that's, that's just, that was something that I, you know, Counselor Todd can certainly advocate for. And I wanted to acknowledge that. That was a part of our discussion. And then I know that we have Kenny here. We have Mr. Michaels here from from Parks and Rec. I know that he and Mike Savinelli from the Parks and Rec Commission had some conversations, or at least one conversation with with the mayor about, you know, the the new pool project going forward. I I don't, I I think it's, it's not, I don't think it's going forward as of now, but they can all speak to that. I wasn't part of that. So really, you know, in terms of an update, I don't have much beyond what I, what I just talked about. I think that that the council, I think your your agenda item is timely, Counselor Testa, because I certainly think that, you know, as we sit here in in early February, you know, we could, we could take the pulse of the council to see, you know, I mean, there were five of us who voted to override the veto. Do those five people still believe we should move forward with the pool? The new pool, I mean, we could make, we could say we do. I mean, really, I think that that I was going to say constitutionally, by law, you know, it has to come from the mayor. We can't, we can just make a public statement, which is certainly within our right, but it doesn't mean anything unless it's it's requested. So I, you know, I think it'd be important to hear from the mayor, important to hear from Parks and Rec on their opinions. But that's one thing we could do. The other, the other topic I think we we should talk about maybe is, and I know Kenny, you'll probably talk about this, is opening the the old pool this summer. And I think that's, you know, we talked about that briefly with Mr. Sivatelli just now, but I think there are budgetary questions there because typically the pool is funded over two budgets. So you you open the pool with dollars that you already have and you keep it open for the season and pay lifeguards and keep paying utilities with money from the next budget. So it is not in the budget. So that's an issue. And and I and I will, you know, it it, look, the I don't, you know, Kenny can speak to the dollars and cents, but but this was not in the budget. And we know as we've spent it off, as we we spent a lot of time on the budget today, and this is certainly something that on the list of priorities to open the old pool on time, I think, you know, I don't know that 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 there's a lot of support for that. Maybe it could be opened for a truncated season with with next year's budget, provided the health guidelines are met. So that's a discussion we could have. We could give our input as a council to to the mayor and to Kenny to say what we would support and not support. For example, if we, if five of us tonight say, you know, don't open the pool, don't waste the money, that might help them as they craft their budget. I don't know. That's something else we could talk about. Something I talked about at the pool committee meeting on the twenty ninth was Sheen Pool. Back in the old days, we could, you got a pool pass, you could use Sheen for certain weeks of the winter. That program was discontinued. I don't think it was heavily used. I think it was not heavily used at all. So it probably didn't justify the expense, again, of lifeguards, although you do have to run that pool anyway because the the YMCA pays to use it, Sheen and Lyman Hall teams use it. So that was something I floated, no pun intended, as something for next winter even. If we don't open the pool, maybe it's something, I don't know. It's something we could look at. So I know the committee was looking at that. It's just, again, just a thing to talk about. I'm not saying it would get approved. Probably wouldn't. You know, my only, my only other thought in the memo that I wrote is that you know, I'm not, I'm not, I I was grateful when you all appointed me the liaison last year, and I think it was, it was good. I was happy to go to that meeting and organize the walkthrough. I'm not convinced, though, that that maybe the the town council forming its own committee still isn't the way to go. Just because of, you know, all the things I just talked about are things I'm talking about, things I know from talking to some of you offline that you have brought to me. So I think the council discussion is a very different discussion than the pool committee discussion. The pool committee, rightfully so, is very invested in this new pool. And I I mean, I want to see the new pool too. But, you know, we start getting off the rails on things like, let's put a splash pad at Dulittle, you know, how much would that cost? Those are not things the pool committee wants to talk about, and I don't blame them. They want to get the new pool done someday when it's, when we can do it. So I think that a town council committee is not constrained, if that's the right word, that the town council committee can talk about anything it wants. We, we answer to the voters. That's it. You don't have to worry about, well, that's not really part of the plan, or don't, don't bring up Sheen. We we cut that years. We could talk about anything we want. So you know, I think going forward, I I might suggest maybe there is value in a committee, but that's really up to the council. So Counselor Testa, that's my update, my rambling update. I don't know if that's meets what you were expecting or not, but I'm happy to field questions, comments.
And Kenny Michaels here from Parks and Recreation. I I can answer any questions that you do have. I can piggyback off of what Counselor Shortell had just mentioned and and some of the new information that I have from our pool vendor who we did a walkthrough on November seventeenth with, who cited what would be called dry repairs that he sees without the pool functioning, no water going through the system, and what it would cost for these repairs prior to the pool opening.
Great. Thank you, because I'm just about to get into that. Thank you, Counselor Shortell. That was very helpful. And as usual, you not only met, you exceeded my expectations. I have a couple of simple questions here. I have a couple of simple questions here. And then an overall discussion regarding where we go from here. We could take that up in a little while. If we do put together a committee, that's great. Because I feel very strongly that we can't let this die. We need to continue and come up with something. So that's where I'm coming from. So if anyone wants to send to the council or you want to, at some point, take a consensus, whatever. We talk about, I'm in favor of moving forward with something and whatever it requires us to do, I'm on board with that. My first question to you, Mr. Michaels, I suppose, would be, what would it take financially and otherwise to open the pool this summer? If in fact, it's even recent, realistic. That's question one. Why don't we just start there? Please?
Sure, Mr. Testa, no problem. So when we did the walkthrough with the, with the, the pool contractor, you know, Val Darren Electric, he's, he's been the pool maintenance contractor for probably the last eight, eight to nine years. Again, he, he gave a rough estimate. He, he said, this is his rough estimate per the eye on a, on a, what he called a dry estimate. Without the pool operating, no water running through the system. What would needed, what would needed to be done before the pool to be opened? Some of the things that, that he referenced that, that, you know, would have to be purchased prior to is as Counselor Shortell mentioned, this is a facility that carries over two budget years. So we would have to cover the, the final two weeks of June for the chlorine, which comes at a cost of, you know, what he estimated is 3,000 per week. He's got to, he's got to buy the sodium bicarbonate, the calcium flake and the acid up front, which he gave his estimate of $6,000. Now there's a pump replacement that has to be done, which he gave an estimate of 8,500. There's three chlorine tanks within that pump house, which I think you all saw during our visit. They are beyond repair. So the, the, the gentleman who, who has the maintenance contract, Tony, has patched those cracks. He's bonded the cracks. He's done everything he can to keep those tanks, you know, from, from leaking. They're, they're at their, their life expectancy. They're, they've reached the end. There's not much more bond though. He can put those cracks to, to keep those tanks together. So there's three new tanks that need to be replaced, which is a cost of 1,500. His general installation to repair cracked pipes that he sees visually. And to, to tie all that into the new tanks is, you know, $1,100 for the labor. There's three underdrain pumps in that pool. Two of them need to be repaired. One of them is, is not functional. So the pool in 1920 ran on two pumps. If the second pump goes, the pool will not be functioning. So he, he said both of them have to be repaired at an estimated cost of, of 3,000 to $4,000 a piece. Total, sorry, total. And then he just noted some miscellaneous pipe repairs in the filter area that he estimated at a general fee of about $2,000. For a total estimate, and again, he said, this is just based on what he sees, is between 28,100 and 29,100. Just in, in those dry repairs. Now he said, once we fill the pool, turn it on, flip the switch. He goes, there could be leaks, there could be seals that, that are gone. Those are things he won't be able to tell until everything is turned on to see if it can function. In addition to that, Public Works did not budget this year for the pool painting, the cost of cleaning company, nor the pool maintenance contract. The cost to paint the pool is an estimate every year of $10,000. So, so that has to be added to the, the 28,000, $29,000 figure. The cost of the cleaning company, now this is for the season, so we can break it out over the two weeks, but the cost to have the cleaning company, who's a third party cleaning company that comes in and cleans and sanitizes the restrooms, is $2,550 for the season. So that contract, I believe, is expired. So that would be something that would have to go out to bid and be set to, to get the pool ready. So what we did was we, we looked at the, the calendar this year in anticipation of, of budgeting for the pool. So what we anticipated was to keep the salaries into next year's budget. We would, we would do our orientation, June 17th and June 18th. Now by doing that, the first pay period for those checks comes out July 1st. That starts the new budget year. So the only thing that we would have to fund or find funding for would be the repairs, the painting, and the, the cleaning contract, which would have to start June 17th. The remaining expenses, staff salaries, the remaining portion of the chemicals that Public Works would have to budget. And then the seasonal maintenance contract would have to carry over, would come out of the 2021, 2022 budget.
So did, so basically the, you need about 42, $42,000 roughly in unbudgeted money to get the pool fixed up and operational. And then you kick into your general operating budget to keep it open. That answers that question. Okay, great. Yes, I appreciate that. Thank you. So that's, that's that. So now you, you did mention meeting with somebody in November, and I know there was walkthroughs and so has anyone, you, your committee or so forth, prepared? I guess alternative costs for the project that was eventually, eventually denied? If it was done in a different scope or different parts, in different phases? Have we looked at alternatives to that project? And come up with some kind of expense estimate?
I just, I, Mr. Testa, just want to make sure that I'm understanding. So alternate costs, like reviewing the, the pool project presented and then possibly taking some of the add-ons out and revising what was the original project?
I guess. Yeah, we said to you, listen, we still want to do a renovation, but obviously the one that was denied, maybe we can't do the, something to that level. Maybe we can take it up again. That's up to us. But yes, I guess I'm looking for that. Is there any, any kind of cost estimate for a reduced scope or a phased project? That it's not the same as the one that was denied?
Sure. But yeah, unfortunately, we, we have not. Mike Savinelli, pool chair, myself, did meet with the mayor a couple of weeks ago. Just to, you know, we presented this information. We did to, to explain to him, my, my intention was to plan to budget and open the pool for this coming year. Now, we did meet back in early November to talk about the pool project and not letting it die. And is there still an interest there? And the mayor said he still has an interest in it, but at the time, and what we're currently going through with the, with the current pandemic, it's, it's, now's not the right time. And Mayor, you can correct me if I'm wrong.
Yes, that's, that's accurate. I think it's very difficult to be able to plan what we, we may be able to do in, in another month. Let alone try to figure out exactly what the conditions will be in June and then July. That's as far as I'm, I'm relating to trying to open the pool this summer. The project in general, I think it's a, a similar issue. We really need more stability. It's a large project. It's multi-million dollar project. I think we need to have better feel for an, an economy and society being more open than what is the case right now.
Okay, I can understand the, the I don't want to say unease, but it gets the, the another word I'm looking for, but not being sure how we want to go forward as far as opening this summer based on current conditions from a health perspective. I don't see any relevance to a long-term project as far as the pandemic and a long-term project. In fact, one might be able to argue it's a perfect time. Because we're not going to use it anyway. So it's shut down. Let's do it now. So using the, the situation with the pandemic and unknown, the unknown situation where we're going to be as a society in six months or 12 months, 18 months, doesn't, I, I, that doesn't fly with me. I do appreciate and understand economical concerns, but those always exist, always will exist. And I think that's something we'll just continue to argue about. So I think we need to make a decision. Start, start getting ready to make a decision as a council. Do we still want to pursue a pool renovation project or don't we? And I feel strongly that we should. And it'd be helpful to have a better idea of, of what a reduced scope project might cost, so we could reconsider doing that. And I would prefer that the pool committee not be discouraged by the administration in coming up with estimates for us. So that we can consider that going forward. That's my position from here. I would like to see it open if the health department and the situation allows for it. And if it requires us finding $42,000 in the budget, I think that's not even an issue worth discussing. It's there. As we saw in an hour and a half worth of discussion earlier tonight. As far as going forward with a, with a renovation project, I'd like us to do whatever it takes to initiate action. And so we can consider that as well. So that's all I have to say. I appreciate the opportunity to have it on the agenda, Mr. Chairman. And I'll leave it to my fellow counselors to weigh in as they see fit. Thank you.
Thank you. The first in line is Counselor Morganstein.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So my general feeling before coming to this meeting and even more so after hearing the figures tonight is that we as a town, I think are very famous for throwing good money after bad. And we've probably been 10 years or longer that we've been doing that for this pool. And every single year, Park and Rec is the first to admit that you could turn on the water after a winter in April and discover that the pool is not at all salvageable. And so I for one am completely against spending money on the pool as it is. That pool as it is, is well beyond its life expectancy. And we are living in a time with the lowest interest rates and the investment for this town should be for redoing it and redoing it at a time when we probably aren't looking into July being doable. We might have a relative amount of people vaccinated, but we're not going to have the 78 to 80% of a population vaccinated and really have critical masks for it to be safe. Just like last year was the time, we are still, this year is the time, but we're stuck with this council would need to be a seven to two majority to override the mayor. And that is, I think, the biggest question here. Do we have the numbers to say? We've talked about pre-budget season, taking money that we have in reserves and applying it to a project. This is that project. We as a council, it would be great if we could come together and say the value of this project to this town is such that using money in reserves, bonding and getting these low interest rates and getting it done at a time when it's not going to be usable. And then the following season, you've got a brand new destination. And you have people looking to get out and about and reactivated it out in the community. And you've looked at pool passes and you've looked at it helping partly to pay for itself. I, I'm all in favor of the project. I don't know that it's fair to the pool committee to say pool and bathhouse only. Could that be looked at? And then a splash pad could be future? I, I'm, I'm all in that it should just be done. And again, interest rates are low. And we need it. And I, I for one, I'll go on the record completely now. And I'm sorry, Kenny, but I will not vote to spend that money. And you could turn on the water and it's all for naught. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Understood, Counselor Morganstein.
Thank you.
Counselor Laffin.
Yes, thank you. So I'm going to agree a lot with what Counselor Morganstein said. So I raised my concerns last year were, I was concerned about the evaluations and how are they going to come back? Now they came back pretty strong. So that has been eased. And my other issue was that we went out for bid before the pandemic set in and all of our bid, you know, the results were all kind of pre-pandemic numbers. And then I felt, I was comfortable with the project. I liked the project. I was happy with the amount of lanes and the splash pad and the parking lot and everything else like that. That the, that our bid just was, was, I, I was, let's just go back out during pandemic. So I think we're, we're at a good point now where we're not even sure we can open or we should open the pool. We're not even sure that it will work if we open. Our evaluations came back strong, so we are on solid beat. Wallingford, if you're betting on a horse, it's a strong horse to bet on, but I don't think this is a bet. This is just solid planning. And going out to bid during a pandemic like this, there will be aggressive and competitive numbers coming back to try and get us to move forward. I think this is exactly the time and the place to do it. You know, had we, had we rolled the dice and done it last year, I, you know, I don't know, cost comparisons, if it, you know, it comes out cheaper this year as I'm forecasting it. Well, we probably wouldn't have been able to really open the pool comfortably this summer anyway with the pandemic. But and we have the answer that, that we offered, that, that a lot of us believed anyway, was that any money put into the pool as it is now isn't going to give us a good return. It would be a lot of money, not that much less, to not get a, a better, a much better product. So I'm, I'm all good to go. I think things will be, I think it's a good time. I think it's a good time to at least put it out there again and, and see where we go. Thanks.
Counselor Zandry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm, I'm probably just going to echo a lot of the sentiment that's already been said, but I had made up my notes. So I kind of wanted to say, you know, just to kind of pile on to Counselor Morganstein's comments on vaccination and where we might be at some point. Even if we were kind of sort of there a little bit later this year, I think it's still people's comfort level. Even though some people will have gotten the vaccination, it will be other people that, that will, that have decided they will not do this. And people going out are going to be uncomfortable. Sector rules might still only allow so many people in the pool area anyway. So I don't think it's very smart or advantageous to try to, to, to even do anything this year with it, with the, with respect to opening the pool this year. And to kind of echo everybody else's sentiment as well. I agree that if we try to spend the money this year, we're going to put a lot of money into trying to get this thing kickstarted, just to have it maybe stall. Once the pool is filled, we may have other issues. And then we may have lower than normal use for a number of reasons. Pool sale, tickets, passes will be down and so forth. And just the general use will be down. And, and I don't think it's a smart move this year to try to open it as much as there might be some level of use. I, I don't want to discuss last year. I, I think last year would have been the year to start the project. I don't disagree that there may not have been every I dotted and T crossed. I don't disagree that there may not have been every I dotted and T crossed with the prior set of bids. I think we would have been and still in a pretty advantageous spot since a lot of people were. Really chomping at the bit to get work kickstarted. There's a lot more work going, the unemployment rate is dropping, even though it's not back to where it was. So you're going to see a little bit less flexibility in price pressure, but again, to echo some of the prior sentiment. We've got the lowest interest rates that we've seen in a long, long time. Our bonding rate is excellent if we want to go and borrow. There's probably grants to pursue. To to try to get this to get the pool rehabilitated. And beyond all of that, as as we speak to it every single year, even in the years where we use some of the allocation, we actually consume it all. We roll back cash more years than we that we consume. We could very simply year by year with whatever rolls back in, put it in a line item. At budget time or after budget time or whatever the case might be, just to set it earmarked aside like a cap and non recurring project type line item. That gets carried over and as appropriation enforced or whatever you want to call it into some future year. Speaking to all of this, you know, we've got. We just did the big revaluation. The numbers were very positive for Wallingford, the fact that a lot of the the revaluations were positive. In, you know, price pressure because we've seen the price pressure increases come in. The mill rate would be dropped. Because of that, because the values have all come up, we still need a certain amount of money to run the town. But once all that balances in, I think we've got we've got additional positives for twenty twenty two. We we look to do this work this year and get get the facility ready to go for next year. You're going to see a lot of pent up desire to get out because things will hypothetically be much better at that point, a lot more vaccinations. Hopefully a lot more settling down of this. And the idea would be there would be that huge demand to get out, to go do things, to be social again, even if you're still being somewhat cautious. That the sales pressure would be up for these passes regardless, regardless. If the pool opened in twenty twenty two in almost any usable state. Because people have been prohibited from even going or not even had the opportunity to go, this would be high pressure on. Pool tag sales. I think with a brand new facility offering a lot of the things that the people are looking for. Is going to add an additional positive pressure on that, not only will people be excited about getting out and doing things again. They're going to have this great, brand new facility completely reworked. That'll be like a gem in the town. We talk about everything we want to do from the aspect of the community in Wallingford Center to bring people downtown for business. This is another thing that brings people together. In our town, and I don't think we should let it fall by the wayside, nor do I think that we should not bite down hard and make the investment in the thing. So I'm I'm on board two times over to get this thing's kickstarted as quickly and as intelligently as we can. I don't want to rush in anything, but I I want to get everything together. Let's get a nice plan together, include all the things that everybody's looking for that the the site and the facility can hold and maintain. And let's get it done. I'm all on board for that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Shertel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, a couple point, well, a few points and a question. So I still support the project as I did last spring, I just want to disagree a little bit with Counselor Testa, I don't want to scale it back at all. I don't want to do a I'd rather go with what Counselor Laffin and Spicer Laffin is saying, put it out to bid again, see what comes of that. Because I feel like. I do want the two extra lap lanes, I'm sorry, I'll put it out there. Two hundred thousand dollars to extra lap lanes, Counselor Laffin and I can argue about those. I I have, I I am so torn, I I kind of tend to agree with with everything that that. Tom said and Gina said and Jason said in terms of, you know, why spend forty two thousand dollars on the on the current pool when more could go wrong? What if, yeah, what if a pipe burst when you put when you turn the water on now, you're, you know, you wait that forty two thousand dollars is going down the drain? I. I was looking up information from Mr. Bose that he had sent last spring. On the impact to the the average taxpayer. And when you look at the fur and and this is to be, this is based on the old assessment, so this these numbers are going to be a little bit lower, slightly lower than I think they they will be now after evaluation, but. In the scenarios, there were three scenarios Mr. Bose laid out with with the debt service. Bottom line, the first year of debt service is not a ton, it's seventy two thousand dollars. In any scenario, that's how much, so that let's just, if this project were to go forward. And we approved it for the July one twenty twenty one budget. We would be adding seventy two thousand dollars of debt service to next year's budget. So that's where I'm, we're talking about spending forty two thousand, maybe this year even. I just don't even understand why, so so again, seventy two thousand in year one of this. Twenty two thousand dollars, it 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 does ramp up. After the second year. But again, three dollars and forty three cents, the average cost of that first year. And the second year goes up to ninety seven thousand dollars and almost ninety eight thousand, depending on the scenario. Five ninety seven, not ninety seven, sorry, I can't read. So anyway, for those reasons, as much as it kills me because I do want to see the pool open at some point. I tend to agree that why why would we want to spend risk that money, so that that's that's one point, I don't want to scale back the project at all. My question for Mr. Bose or for the mayor, it's it's a process question. Do we have to? If you, Mayor, if you wanted to do this, would you have to do it in the budget or could you decide like next fall? Like, let's say it's, you know, October and things are better and people are, you know, there's herd immunity and things are a lot better. Could you come to what if you felt it was appropriate? Could you come to us then or do you have to like, do you have to do it at budget time, I guess is my question? Hypothetically.
Yeah. Hypothetically, I I don't, I don't think. There are projects that have come up and we didn't budget anything in that year short of, you know, maybe hiring an architect or something like that. Where you you need someone to prepare. Bid specifications or or. Changes or whatever else. Other than those more incidental costs. You wouldn't be budgeting for in that year, it would be a subsequent time period that would begin the process of the payment.
Okay.
Now, if if you were planning to actually have construction completed and operation. Within a year, then there would have to be. Budgeting for operational costs. So, you know, the the water, the cost of the water, the chemicals, the all of the things that are necessary, the the personnel. That would be in a budget if the actual opening would occur.
Okay.
But the construction really is not something other than, you know, the incidental costs that that. Are are generally huge in number, especially given that we have specs at this point.
Yep. Okay, thank you, understood, so yeah, and. And that's a good point, I mean, I mean, to do it, to decide in the fall, I mean, the ideally, whenever, if we ever do this, we wanted to decide now and break ground in the spring so that you're not. But yeah, that makes, I understand what you're saying, thank you for that. So anyway, I, you know. I'd like to see it done. And I agree with everyone too that that, you know, the timing mark probably is is good now because we're, you know, there's the pool season is in doubt again this year with health and all that, so anyway. That's where I am on it largely unchanged from from last time. I'm not why I am unchanged based on the new project, I just have reservations about the old pool with with everything we talked about, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Todd.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I. I think I'm kind of disagreeing with most you on a few points, I just wanted to to let everyone know where I'm, what I'm kind of thinking on this at this point. First of all, I still think we're in economic crisis and a lot of people are hurting, a lot of people are still out of jobs, a lot of businesses are shutting down. And so as I agree with the mayor a few months ago, I still agree that I I don't know that this is the right time to be spending this kind of money on something that's. Nice, but it's not a necessity, so. I do have concerns about the timing of this. If it were to come up again. That being said. I. I don't have a problem with it being open this summer if that's what Parks and Rec decides if they think that they can open it safely and we can get another year. I'm I'm being hopefully, hopefully optimistic that this summer outside activities can. Can resume and even if there's still social distancing, the current pool as we know is is huge and allows for that. And so if if Parks and Rec decides that, you know, they want to do that, I know some said they they wouldn't support spending the money, but I'm. I'm okay with that if that is anything that's within our control, so. That's that's what I think about that aspect, and then one other thing I wanted to bring up. Counselor Shertel and I, after the the pool meeting. A few months ago. I had mentioned, and I think I mentioned to the council and I also brought up at the meeting about possibly doing an RFP to see if we could renovate the current pool. I know that's not popular with the pool committee and I apologize, but I I do think that there are a lot of aspects of the current pool that. Some people have said to me they would not like to see go. So again, I'm I'm still kind of thinking we could maybe renovate what we have and do this for much cheaper. And we were able to get, actually Counselor Shertel was able to get from the purchasing department the. Nineteen ninety nine, I believe, bid specs, they they still had those and I can certainly forward those to the council or to the. Pool committee or anyone who wants to see them. But if we were to go that route, I know a big concern was maybe that it would cost too much, we would have to redo this, all the bid specs and that. That's a lot of money and time, but we do have those still, the purchasing department has those, and so we could, if we wanted to take a look at that. And rather than start from scratch and redo everything, we can maybe just use those and save some money. Again, I know that's it's premature and we're not looking at that, but I just wanted to let everybody know that that we do still have those, so that could be something we could work from if. If the current project. Were were not to go ahead, but. That's all I have, thank you.
Counselor Marone.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, I'll be really brief, I just wanted to respond to Counselor Testa's question about how people feel about it. You know, if I could just push back on a couple of things that Councilwoman Tada said just a few minutes ago, you know, I agree that pools are nice to have. I think the senior centers are nice to have, I think open space and parades and so on are nice to have, so I think there are things that are maybe aren't necessarily required of local government, you know, the pool's a park. Local government does have an obligation to maintain parks. I think if we were going to make a decision that we didn't want the pool, we were going to shut it down and do something else, I think that's. Would be an appropriate decision, but I think to keep trying to limp along the way we're doing it now, I think it's kind of a waste of time. So I'd rather see the pool not open in the state that it's in, I'd rather move forward with the big project and I don't, I'm not interested in looking at how we could rehab. You know, what what we've got now, which is kind of problematic, so so that's where I stand, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Testa.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is that something pop up on my screen, am I on? I can't see myself. Great. I just want to clarify one thing for Counselor Shortell's benefit. I I actually, I I'm not, I also am not in favor of a scaled down project. I guess what I was trying to get across was if we could just get bit of of an idea of expenses. And if necessary, you know, if necessary to get buy in from everybody, if that was the best we could do, we would have the numbers for that. But no, I I I too would like to see the project go forward as we originally hoped. So I don't want to imply that anyone to think I'm applying, let's, I'm okay with cutting it back if that was the only way to get something done. I I would certainly go along with that because that would be better than not doing anything. I understand everybody's. Hesitation. Regarding. Spending any short term money to get it open, my my point there was if the health department in the Park and Rec decided that it could be open. And this is what it would take to do so, I still think that that would be a smart idea. But I can understand people not wanting to put is to put any money into it. For a short term gain. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bjorkman.
Hey, Chairman, how are you?
Fine, how are you?
Great, thanks, just a quick question for Councilman Tada. I'm just, I I just want to make sure I'm clear, she's in favor of opening up the pool. But she's got some concerns from constituents about. Areas that they're not happy with. Can she just reflect on that a little bit because that will help us to proceed with the design of the pool? So if there are people that aren't happy with certain things, it'd be nice to know what those certain things are.
Sure. Um, the the main thing that I heard from some people was that they like the size of the pool and that the entire thing is the zero depth entry. And there were concerns that the new pool is going to be too small. So I know we talked last year about the current pool being. Maybe too large and we didn't need it that big. But there were people that said they really like the design of the pool and I guess once we get rid of that. That design that you can't really, you can't ever go back to that because I guess, I think it came out that the new. The new health codes don't allow for the the type we have now, so. That was the main thing, just that they like the pool that we have, it's just getting rundown.
Do they understand though that the the existing design is still at a zero depth, but it's just a smaller footprint?
Yes, but it's the it's the zero depth in the one area, and I think another concern was the entire pool is just being too small for for the money.
For the for the money, okay. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Any members of the public wish to question or comment? I see nothing in the chat bar, anybody on the telephone? Nothing. And. That's all we have. There being. No further business on the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, may I?
Counselor Testa, you may.
Well, thanks, yeah, I, well, without making a motion, I know that we can't do anything, but. What's the, what is, what's the feeling of as far as where we're going with this with the pool? We just.
Well, I think the counselors have spoken, you've heard. Think you've heard everybody's opinion.
That's true. I'll let me pack up my thoughts and come back with a another motion or an agenda item in the near future about a potential plan to move forward. Rather than just throw something out of the cup. But thank you very much.
Counselor Morganstein, I see your hand.
Yes, thank you, sorry, do we have your opinion?
I, my opinion is that I favor the proposed project, the total renovation, I don't favor a Band-Aid. My issue is timing.
Okay. Okay, great, okay.
But but I I'm comfortable, I think I said this last year. I think the proposed project is a good project, I think the park really needs to be gutted. And and completely rebuild rebuilt, and I think the proposal that the pool committee presented to us is a good one.
Okay, great, I appreciate that, okay, so Councilman Testa. Do you want to talk with Park and Rec and kind of bring things back around? Is that where we are?
Yeah, I think so.
Great.
Consult with our esteemed. Consult with our esteemed liaison. Come up with a little bit of a game plan. I think we're all, we, we, you know, we, we have some time, I think now to, uh, put together an idea to go forward.
I, I do have a request from, uh, Ms. Bjorkman to speak again. So Michelle, if you would.
Thank you, Benny. Um, sorry to, to, uh, delay this whole situation. One last question. I, um, traditionally send out a email to all playground staff. January 1st, January, January 1st to January 15th. I then send out a letter to all appointment letters to, um, lifeguard staff. I've got people kind of like reaching out to me saying, okay, what are we doing at the pool this year? Um, just a heads up for everyone. The letter goes out January 1st to the 15th, as I just mentioned. I usually get a res- a receipt or, um, reply from them by March 8th, 9th, 10th, whatever it is. And it's saying, yes, I'm coming back. No, I'm not coming back. This year, I'm not sure if you folks are aware, but there's an extreme shortage of lifeguards. And in the past, many, many years ago, probably 15 years ago, we offered a certification program at Sheehan High School that we would certify guards to, um, go through our process and have them guarantee us a year of service. And we would pay for their certification, which now I think is probably $300 or $400. Um, we don't have that luxury of offering Sheehan at this point because Sheehan is not available. We don't have that luxury of offering Cho, which is not available since the campus is closed. Um, we have aged out lifeguards at this point. Kids that have taken on full-time teaching positions late, whatever it is. They, they've graduated. They've moved on. They no longer need a lifeguard job. So in the event that we do open up community pool, I think it's critical that you're all aware that we may have a shortage of guardage, guards this, this summer. Um, I think it's really important to know that, note that, uh, our pool supervisor is a teacher. Our assistant is a teacher, uh, to get them to come on to do training, to get people to come in and do training may be challenging. So as soon as I can find out from you folks and the mayor and council, um, if we are able to open up a pool, I would appreciate that because we can open a pool, but if we have no guards, then we're out of luck. So the, like I said, the letter goes out in January. It did, the email, it did not go out in January because of the situation. The response from the guards and playground staff is traditionally in May, uh, March. I'm sorry. Um, so any, any help is really appreciated.
I, um, I suspect you really need to get that from the administration. I, I don't. I, I don't think that's within our, our view.
Okay. I just, I just want to make it, to be honest, Chairman, I want to make it public that, you know what? I would hate to see that the, that the, um, council approves this, the mayor passes this, all is good. We're going to, we're going to take a shot at opening up the pool and all of a sudden we have no staff. We have to certify these guards every year. We have almost close to 30 people. And I just want to make sure that we can fulfill our end of the bargain.
Good. I appreciate what you're trying to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Counselor Shertel.
Sorry, I just, as Michelle was talking, it's a, it's a question that just, just occurred to me, it, just to kind of pile onto that concept. I know with the why right now, it's indoors, but, but there are limits to how many people can be in the pool at the same time, how many people per lane for the swim team. I mean, with the, with the pool this summer, Michelle, do you think it could even be, I mean, you may need more, I mean, you may need more lifeguards. If you had the normal number, you probably would need more than usual because typically you close entire sections of the pool. But I almost suspect with social distancing, you'd have to open the whole pool and have more lifeguards. Is, I don't know if that's a fair assumption, or if you don't know at this point, but.
Um, Councilman Shertel, I honestly don't know. I don't think we would need more not lifeguards. I really truly don't. I just want to make sure that we have enough guards to cover the pool, to cover the hours.
Right.
And from a budgetary standpoint, that we're budgeting, if we go into the budgets, you know, theory that we, we budget appropriately. Um, I know Cho is having a very difficult time right now. Um, they've reached out to us looking for guards for their Cho faculty and Cho swim teams. Um, every, it's, it's cyclical. It's probably every eight to 10 years that people, we lose guards for some reason. I don't know why. And that's why we only, um, offered the training program many years ago. So we fortunately have not had to do that. But I'm just saying, it would be a disservice to the community if, you know, the pool gets approved, it gets opened, we get approved with everything. We have no guards. So the sooner we know, the better off we are. That's all I'm asking.
Understood. Thank, I appreciate that. I, I, if I'm counting, I feel like a majority of the council doesn't want to open the pool this year because it's throwing good money after bad. That's my sense from this. I wasn't taking notes, but if I, in my, if I mentally go through who said what, I, I feel like that's what was, uh, said. But anyway, um, I get, totally get what you're saying and, and, um, thank you for that insight. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, it appears there's nothing more. And so that is the end of our meeting. I will adjourn this meeting. I'll stop the recording. Everyone have a good night.
Thank you. You too.
This conference is no longer being recorded.